Well, it's well after 6:30. There is a call in present, so I am going to call this meeting to order. And I would like to begin by asking Constable Alaw Pierre to lead us in the pledge. If you have a hat, would you please remove it and please stand? Well, first of all, folks, thank you for coming this evening. I'm sorry, what?
Oh, there you go.
Okay. The only thing I'd like to say tonight is, you know, a lot of folks do things and they're not recognized by a lot of folks. And I just want to bring a few things to your attention tonight. And one of those is we all have new annual town reports and they came out very nice. Every year, our town administrative assistant Karen puts this report together. And I just want to say, I think she does a fine job. And I want to thank you, Karen, for your hard work and dedication on that. It's a very nice report. Okay. And finally, the other thing I'd like to acknowledge is, yesterday, we had one of our first auctions in recent memory. I mean, I never remember one. And I'd just like to thank our treasurer, Amy, who has done a tremendous job and worked very diligently to have this work done. And as I understand it, we were able to collect upwards of $177,000. And we've taken these properties off a tax title and they're now owned again and will be paying property. So, thank you, Amy. I have witnessed the constable's return of the warrant, so this is a properly called town meeting. I would like to have a motion, preferably by unanimous consent, to allow the town manager, the town council, town accountant, police chief, be allowed to speak at this meeting. Does anybody object to that? Hearing none, those individuals may speak. Is there anybody else here that is not a citizen of the town of Brookfield or a voter of the town of Brookfield that might need to speak? Oh, there he is. Ryan from the Highway Department. Is there any objection to Ryan speaking before the town meeting if that were to come to pass? Hearing none, those individuals can speak. Thank you very much. All right. As I begin most meetings, I'd like to read the rules that I am going to be running this meeting by. So, there are limits to debate. Each member who wishes to speak on a motion has no more than two minutes. Each member can speak two times on each given motion, but may not speak a second time on any motion until everyone else wishing to speak on a given side of the question has had an opportunity to speak. Time limits are overall. If you ask a question, the answer comes from your time. Rude, disrespectful speech will not be tolerated. Also, remarks attacking the character of an individual, including statements that someone has an agenda or ulterior motives, will be called out of order. We have constables here to escort you out if you think otherwise. Applauding, cheering, booing, or otherwise expressing approval or disapproval are not permitted. All debate or questions are directed to the moderator, me. Previous question or the motion to close debate once made and adopted ends debate and it doesn't matter if the line at the microphone is going out the door. Debate is done. In debate, I will attempt to alternate between supporting and opposing viewpoints as best I possibly can, given the limitations of the microphone. We are here to make decisions about the town of Brookfield. Decisions are made by making motions, debating, and voting. No one should speak unless they are engaged in one of those three things after being recognized by me. You should look to address the town meeting either in support or opposition to a motion. You can certainly ask questions during debate, but please keep questions and debate focused on the motion at hand. And again, if you ask a question, the answer will come out of your time. If someone has stolen your thunder and made the point that you wanted to make, please refrain from repeating it. If a point has been made, I may ask you to either bring a new point or to stop. If I think, if you think that I'm doing something wrong, or something else you can't hear, or something's going on, please just raise a point of order or jump up and say, "Hey, I can't hear," or whatever. And just let me know and I'll address that when that comes up. Finally, in the past, we've come across motions, we've come across an article where no motion is made. We have used the so-called motion to pass over. No such motion exists. Furthermore, there is no reason for town meeting to take any action when there is no motion. Therefore, if you have a warrant article that you've decided to withdraw or have no motion, just tell me there's no motion, or better yet, just stay silent. And I will move on to the next article. Are there any questions about anything that I said?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. Dave Holcraft here.
It's on. Pull the whole stand up, Dave. There you go. Bingo.
Can you hear me now?
Speak loudly. Speak loudly. It is on.
It is on? It's on now. Okay. Dave Holcraft here. Mr. Moderator, could you have a request? If there's people at the microphone and the question gets moved, is there some way you could change your mind and let the people speak that are at the microphone and then move the question? So, people are at the microphone and somebody decides to move the question and it passes, I think the people at the microphone should be able to speak. That's the way the meetings have been in the past, and I think it's only good for the people. If they come here and they're at the microphone, they should be able to speak.
I know that that has been one time in the past. I will not allow that.
Okay. One other thing is, I'm filming this meeting, so I'm just letting everybody know that I am filming, according to state law, and acknowledging that to everyone here tonight.
Everybody understands, Mr. Holcraft is taping the meeting. Good.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Article one. Who's going to make a motion? Anybody? Come to the microphone.
Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion to accept the annual town report of the town officials as printed.
I'll repeat the motion.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to accept the annual report of the town officials as printed.
There's been a motion made to accept the annual report of town officials as printed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. There is a second. Is there any debate on the motion to accept the annual town report? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The annual report has been adopted. Article number two.
Mr. Moderator, move the town vote to raise and appropriate $9,966,177.99 to defray the expenses of town for the ensuing financial year.
So, I just need to ask a question. Could you guys in the back hear her?
No.
All right. So, I'm going to repeat the motion. It's fine. Okay? I heard it, so we're good. A motion has been made to see if the town will raise and appropriate $9,966,177.99 to defray the expenses of town for fiscal year 2024, as shown in the fiscal year 24 budget contained in the annotated warrant and as recommended by the select board. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Okay. So, I got a couple, I got some instructions that I want to give you on how we're going to handle the budget. So, I'm not going to go through this line by line and ask for holds and then go back and revisit them. Okay? All I'm going to do is to go through the warrant book. The last eight pages of the warrant book have the budget. There are no real line numbers on this. There are account numbers, but they're very long and tedious. So, what I, all I want to do is, I want to go through this page by page. And if somebody wants to make an amendment to the select board's recommendation, because those are the numbers that we are basing this on. Okay? The select board's recommendation, that column, those are the numbers we're talking about. Okay? And if you want to change one of those numbers, come to the microphone and make an amendment to strike the number that's there and insert whatever number it is that you want it to be. Okay? Does everybody understand what we're going to do here? Let me just make sure. So, you're certainly welcome to ask questions, but I would please ask you, if you're going to ask some questions, please have in mind the idea that you want to amend the line item, just to avoid a lot of questions that, you know, you could have gotten at the advisory board or something like that. Okay? I don't want to take a lot of time just answering questions. If you have a question about an item because you think that maybe there's something wrong with it, or you'd like to change it, and depending on the answer, you're going to make a motion to change it, then please come forward. You're certainly welcome to ask questions, but please keep in mind that this is going to take a little bit of a time, and I just want to save as much time as possible. Okay? Everybody clear on how we're going to do this? Can you come to the microphone? Don't worry, I'll repeat as best I can whatever she says, so.
If we make an amendment, and so we have to come up and we have to give an amended number, now, do we have to explain why we want to amend that figure, or will you do that after they're already?
We're going to take it up right then and there. So, if you come to the microphone and you want to strike a number and insert another one, we're going to take it up right then and there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And town accountant is going to be keeping track of everything, so at the bottom, so when we're all done, she's going to give me a nice figure that we're all going to vote on in the end. Okay? Everybody with me so far? Excellent. All right. So, starting with the first page of the budget in the warrant book, is there anyone that would like to amend any of the recommendations of the select board? Okay. Going to page two. So, it's complicated. I'll give you some time to flip it through and do whatever. Is there anyone? What's that? Oh, you want to go back to the first page?
Yep.
Okay. You need to come to the microphone if you want to do something. If you could say your name and...
Yep. Jake Hill.
And Jake, before you go, just tell me, give me the description of the line. You don't have to give me the account number. I don't want, just tell us what line you're on from the description.
Total technology.
Total technology. Okay. For $79,099.
Correct.
Okay.
Seventy-six. Seventy-six.
I'm sorry. Seventy-six thousand, ninety-nine dollars.
Correct.
Thank you.
I do have a question as far as possibly making amendment in that the maintenance of thirty thousand, I think it was, twenty-nine something that's listed earlier in the page. Twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven. If we could get further detail as far as what that maintenance entails.
Okay. So, the question is, in this line, there's approximately thirty thousand dollars, I think you said for maintenance, and he's asking for a description of what that includes. Is there somebody that could give us a description of what that includes?
Kelly Robbins, town administrator. If you flip the page, there's a breakdown of what that includes. So, the maintenance includes the configuration settings, interconnections, networks, servers...
Okay. Hold on. Pull that microphone good and close to you and speak good and loud. I'm sorry.
I'm being very gentle.
Oh, yeah, but be bold and brave.
All right. So, if you look at what is on...
Hold on. Can you hear him? You got to go louder.
You can't hear, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Is that better? Okay. So, if you flip the page, you'll see a breakdown and you'll see that the computer maintenance is handled by an every. This is our endpoint detection response. They manage all of the configuration settings, interconnections, networks, servers, server devices, accessories, installations, migration, inventory, records, monitoring, security, backups, account users, passwords, resets, emails. They maintain our tech and repair it as necessary. They provide live support. They optimize our tech for reliability, security, speed, efficiency, in that order according to industry standards. They make recommendations on improvements. And then it lists what each of the computers has. So, you have your computer has a local copy. They manage that. They do the, they clone to the server. They basically manage everything that's on this page. So...
Yeah, fair enough. Online, I don't think this was included. It had the breakdown. I didn't see this. So, now that I see this...
Yeah, actually, this was printed from the online file.
Okay. I didn't see it right there.
All right. So, I didn't start the timer, so are you all set?
I'm all set.
Awesome. That's golden. Anything else on the first page? We kind of went back to the first page of the budget? Okay? Anything else on the first page?
Free.
Okay. Let's go to the second page. Anything on the second page? Again, we're looking at the select board's recommendation. Okay, I'm going to move on. I do want you, oh, we do have a question. And while she's making her way up, if you discover something after we've gone by the page, feel free to tell me that, hey, wait a second, I want to go back, okay? Until we vote on the final number, it's open. Go ahead.
I would like to amend the town clerk's salary to fifty thousand, thirty-three dollars and seventy-one cents.
Hold on a second. What was that number?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand, thirty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. And I have, and I have here...
Okay. Hold on one second. So, you want to strike forty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-one cents?
Yeah.
And insert fifty thousand, thirty-three dollars and seventy-one cents?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to this?
Second.
Okay. There's a second. Go ahead, Linda.
The town clerk is...
Hold that microphone good and close.
The town clerk has been here with us for fourteen years. People do not realize the duties of the town clerk, because I was the former town clerk. The town clerk is responsible for all of the census of the community. He has to do a residence list for the school. He has to also give a list for the jury commissioner. He oversees all of the election. He prepares the ballots. He administers campaign finance, certifies nomination papers, and supervises voter registration and absentee ballots. Licenses. He issues state licenses, permits, including marriage licenses, permits for bazaars. He issues local permits and certificates as mandated by the bylaw, which includes business certificates, dog licenses, and kennel licenses. Local boards and committees. He administers the oath of office to all elected and appointed members of the local boards and committee. He informs in writing all elected and appointed officials about the state, open meeting, and conflict of interest laws, and he posts all of the meetings of all boards. Official decision duties. Records, and he certifies all of records of the town meeting and all of the appropriations...
Microphone.
Appropriations that need to be sent in to the Department of Revenue. He does planning board decisions, certifies all notes for borrowing. He's keeper of the seal and records and state tax leads. Public records. He provides access to public records to comply with Massachusetts general law, certifies copies of all town records, records and preserves of original birth...
You got thirty seconds.
Marriage and deaths. He provides certified copies of, and conducts assisted genealogy research, and he provides input to the Massachusetts Central Voter Registration System. He has a lot of responsibilities, plus he has to maintain the gateway system of the births and deaths. A lot of people just think that the town clerk does dog licenses and a few other licenses, but he has, he's responsible to every town in this, every department in this town.
Okay.
So, I hope people will consider this, because they really don't realize the job of the town clerk.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Is there any further debate on the question? And the question is, by the way, to amend the town clerk's salary by striking forty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-one cents and inserting fifty thousand, thirty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. Is there any further discussion on the motion to amend this line item?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Can I be heard in the back?
No.
Can I be heard in the back now?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Moderator, through you, I'd like to ask a question, Ms. Lincoln. Is that allowed?
Yeah. Comes out of your time.
That is fine. Ms. Lincoln, do you have any information on salaries of town clerks in comparable jurisdictions, towns of the same population size and the same load? Because I would like to think that if, that I would hope that we're paying him fairly, and if we're not, I would like to understand that.
Hey, hold that good and high and, it's not on. It's not on. It's got the green, so hang on one second. Do a test.
Testing, one, two, three.
No, she's going to have to hold it, because... Step right up to it there.
I haven't had a whole time to research this, but I can tell you the town of East Brookfield, which is a comparable, pretty much size to us, they have a town clerk down there who is new, and she is making fifty-two thousand dollars a year. And then you're going to go hire an assistant library director, and you're going to pay Mike only ten thousand dollars more than she's making, and this is a new position. And he's grossly underpaid, and I feel that he deserves a raise, because people do not realize the responsibility that the town clerk has. Without a town clerk, you cannot run your town. You have more?
Mr. Moderator, I'd say thank you to Ms. Lincoln. I, my understanding is that a analysis of comparables for the assistant library director was done and across many towns, and that was done...
We're talking about the town clerk here, so library directors is not pertinent to the question, please. Thank you.
Ms. Lincoln brought it up. I thought I would respond.
Yes. I kind of allowed it, but I really don't want to go that direction, so...
Then I would just point out that for the other positions for which large raises have been done, significant studies of comparable towns have been done, and I, my thought is, I would like to know, I would like to do a greater analysis, have more detail before deciding, before allocating this raise.
Well, I disagree with you. I don't know if Mike has anything to say on this, but I don't know if Mike has anything to say on this, but other communities are making much more money than Mike. I have done the salary, when I was town clerk, I always did salary surveys, but everybody said it was the size of the town, but it doesn't make any difference, because everyone has the same amount of work to do.
Okay. Time's up. Did you have a question?
Sure. No, I was, just speak on it.
Go ahead.
All right. Mr. Moderator, through you. Just so that for everybody's awareness, and we'd have to check with other towns, but our current schedule, as I understand it, for the town clerk is 24 hours weekly. So, based on the scheduled hours, I'm of the opinion that it's currently a fair salary.
You have one more opportunity to speak.
You say that it's 24 hours. Mr. Sari works more than 24 hours.
You may speak to me.
Or Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
In a small community like Brookfield, we know the townspeople, and if they call us up here on a weekend or a weekday when we are not open, we will come up here and we meet the people of the community, because we care about the people. Mr. Sari cares about the people in this community, and he's willing to help them out in any way that he can help them out. So, it's not a 24-hour-a-week position, because a lot of times you're on call seven days a week, because people will call you at home and they will ask you to help them. And if you know these people, you don't want to turn these townspeople down.
Is there any further debate on the question? Okay. The motion is to amend town clerk's salary from forty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and seventy-one cents to fifty thousand, thirty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. I think we should, I think we should count. I'm sorry. I think we should count. I think the ayes had it, but, so tellers or constables, all those in favor, please stand.
Say that again?
All those in favor, please stand. All those in favor of amending the town clerk's salary to fifty thousand, thirty-three dollars
Thirty-five.
Hold on. Thirty-two, and you said forty-five? All right. You may be seated. Seventy-seven voted in the affirmative. Thirty-five voted no. The ayes have it. The town clerk's salary has been amended to fifty thousand, thirty-three dollars and seventy-one cents.
Point of order?
Point of order.
Do you need a second for that motion?
We did, we did ask for a second. It was seconded. It was seconded. Thank you. All right, then. Anything else on the second page?
Yeah, I got a question on the, well, I'm going to make a motion to, on the collective salary. I want to go from fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-nine to forty-nine thousand, eighty-four dollars. The reason this is...
Oh, hold on one second. Okay. So, the line that I read is fifty-eight thousand, right now, it's currently sitting at fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-six cents, and you want to make it again. What was the number? Forty-nine thousand...
Eighty-four dollars.
Eighty-four dollars even?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there a second? Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay.
All right. Can I continue?
Yeah.
The advisory board gave her an extra six hours years ago, I think it was '15, to work 34 hours. She is now working 28 hours. That's about a hundred and eighty dollars per week extra for not working. We don't have her working Wednesday nights. She used to work Fridays, and now she's coming in at 10 o'clock instead of nine, instead of nine o'clock. It breaks down to 28 hours. This is one of the reasons we're going to have a, we're talking about making it an appointed position. This is what's going on, and it's a bonus of a hundred and eighty dollars... This is what's going on and it's a bonus of a hundred and eighty dollars a week and I don't think it's fair to the rest of the workers at the town hall and that is my motion.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, Brenda Paris, the town clerk.
Good morning Brenda, be bold.
Oh, yeah.
I know, it stings.
Um, I want to clarify, I work thirty-two hours a week, I worked, I worked nine to usually five or six sometimes. I, Clarence suggested long ago that I open at ten and leave and close at four, most of the days the town hall is locked at four anyway and this gives me a chance to go to the bank, which is always a forty-five minutes to an hour trek because we don't have a bank in town, so. But I am always doing thirty-two hours a week.
Okay.
So.
Good. Anybody else? All right, the motion on the floor, uh, is to amend, uh, the collector's salary from fifty-eight thousand four, four hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-six cents to forty-nine thousand eighty-four dollars. Uh, all those in favor say aye? Uh, all those opposed say no?
No.
Uh, the noes have it, uh, the motion is not adopted. Is there anything else on the second page? Okay, I'm gonna move to the third, if you change your minds, let me know. Any amendments for the third page? Starts with planning board expenses at two thousand bucks and ends with total fire department a hundred and fifty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty-seven dollars and change. Any amendments on page three? Oh, this is looking better. I was getting a little worried there. All right, moving to page four again, if you see something as we move along, you want to go back, I'm more than happy to do that. All right, page four starts with telephone contract leases for eight thousand and total planning, total parking tickets of a whopping three hundred and thirty-three dollars. Any amendments on page number four? Yeah, I know they're not numbered, they're numbered for me and, uh, it's, uh, the pages aren't numbered, I'm sorry, it's from all I didn't print it, so I'm not sorry. Okay, the next page. Starts with three warden expenses at twelve thousand four hundred and ends with snow and ice, seventy-seven thousand four hundred and five bucks. Anybody want to make an amendment? Okay, let's go to the next page, I'm calling it page six, it starts with streetlights for zero dollars and, uh, total veterans of ninety thousand eight twenty-three eighty-nine. Yay, puppies. Is that a registered voter of the town, by the way? Sorry, couldn't help myself. Anybody have any amendments to, uh, what I'm calling page number six? Oh, I hate, I, I can't tell you how many times I did that, it's horrible. I, I, so, I'm sure that those that printed it will fix it next time, right, advisory committee? Good. How about page number? Select board, yeah, well, it's the select board. Sorry, I shouldn't be criticizing. Did you have?
Yeah, what's the heading on the page you're working on right now? What's the first line?
Uh, well, I just turned the page, so it's, uh, total health sanitation and special services, three hundred and four thousand, and then the final line is fire truck, uh, interest, twenty-two thousand forty-three seventy-three.
Mr. Moderator?
Uh, I got a couple of different people. Uh, Mr. Holcraft, did you, you're at the microphone, so there's a couple of people that want to speak, so I'm just. Uh, Linda?
I have another one I would like to amend, the library director, to sixty-five thousand dollars.
No, hold on, one second. So you want to strike, uh, the library director wages of sixty thousand dollars and insert sixty-five thousand dollars, is that correct? Is there a second to the motion? To amend, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second.
Okay. One of the reasons, we have a library director that's been here with us for twenty-five years. In my opinion, I feel she is one of the best library directors we have. She has done all kinds of programs here for the town of Brookfield and especially the children. She has taken a lot of children in the cold weather, they have a place to come, she takes and she buys some snacks and drinks out of her own money and she's very good to every patron that comes in. She knows all of the history here of the town of Brookfield and she takes time individually to spend with every person that comes in that library and helps them with anything she can. And now she is maintaining two buildings, she's maintaining also the annex of that building and I fully believe that she is deserving of this money and she's even deserving of many more, but I will start with five thousand dollars.
Any further?
I muted myself, go figure that. Uh, my wife Sue would love it if I'd do that all more often, I think. Uh, yeah, you need to come to the microphone and, um, you can just lift that right up, it, it'll move right up for you, you gotta put your foot up.
I'd like to know how many hours a week that is.
We went to him to just pick the stupid thing up, I was thinking, I'm sorry, what? Now he's goofing around, what, what was the question that you asked again? Just say it.
How many hours a week?
How many hours a week? Can somebody answer that to me? How many hours a week the, uh, library director, uh, works or what that's based on?
Give me one second, I might have.
One second. I'm sure we have an answer somewhere in all these intelligent people up here.
Brenda's right there.
Uh, so, does the, the librarian, however, so, does anybody object to, does anybody object to have the librarian, uh, address town meeting? I don't believe you're a resident, are you? Does anybody object to that? Okay, good. All right. Um, uh, hold on one second, we gotta, we gotta, we gotta answer the question before we, before we get to anything else. Oh, do you have an answer? Well, why didn't you say so?
Well, I'm a little shy, you know?
Oh, come on, be bold, have fun, this is fun, man, come on.
Okay, okay, Shelby O'Dea Hill, and she works, the library director works thirty-six hours a week.
Thirty-six hours a week. There you go. Any further debate?
Um, if, if I'm reading this want book, it looks like she's getting a six percent raise and we also are gonna vote in possibly a assistant director. Um, the library's only open twenty-one to twenty-two hours per week. Based on a seven-day work week, that's only about three hours a day. Um, and if you check with the other towns around, she's getting quite a nice salary right now and now we want to give her a six percent and it looks like we're gonna vote maybe to give the workers in our town a three percent. So, and also I'd like to know, uh, is Brenda here tonight?
Yes.
Okay, can she come up and, uh, speak on her own behalf?
Uh, if she would like to, she may.
I'm asking the question.
Uh, would you like to come up and speak on your own behalf? Totally up to you, no, no requirement. You have to come to the microphone though, because, you know.
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah.
Brenda Meterville, library director.
Yes.
What would you like to know?
Uh, do you want to speak for yourself at all? I mean, the, the question is to ask you if you want to defend your wages, I think is what the, is that the, is what the point is, I guess, I, you know? Is that, is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
Okay.
We, we're open twenty-nine hours a week, uh, Tuesday through Saturday. Kate does all the field trips for the elementary school off hours, so that means during this time of year, we're open way more hours, probably closer to thirty-eight, sometimes forty hours. Um, because we deal with all the students that come in for the field trips and getting library cards. Um, I've been here twenty-five years, I don't know what else you want to know?
What?
Anybody have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for?
We love you, Brenda.
Okay, time's almost up, so let's just call it a day.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Moderator, I ask to move the question, please.
Would you come to the microphone? I, I, I know you, I know you want to do, I know it's fun to do it that way, I used to do it all the time, but I really need you to come to the microphone.
Thomas Carmody, Quaybuck Street. Uh, Mr. Moderator, I ask to move the question, please.
Uh, there's a motion to move the question, which is to close debate. Is there any objection to closing debate on this question? Okay, it's unanimous. Um, so the motion that we have before us is to amend library director wages from sixty thousand to sixty-five thousand dollars. All those in favor of giving the librarian sixty-five thousand dollars as a salary, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no?
No.
The ayes have it. Uh, the, the library director wages has been amended to sixty-five thousand dollars. Any other questions on this page that we're on right now? Any other amendments that anybody wants to offer? All right. Final page, starts with eighteen Common Street and zero dollars and ends with, well, the total. Anybody want to make, uh, offer an amendment to anything on this page?
Mr. Moderator, don't tap.
Yes.
Uh, the line item, uh, for the water department expenses, um, was requested at forty-nine seven sixty-two and it's, uh, recommended at forty-three, uh, four twenty twenty-three. I understand that, um, the reason for the reduction is that they've taken the electrical expenses out, is that, is that correct?
Can somebody answer that question?
I mean, Kelly.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
So the question is, um, is the reduction in the water department expenses the result of the electricity being taken out of that line?
Yes, that's exactly what it is, that's the only thing that was taken, it was bumped into the electricity account.
Okay, so there was six thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-seven cents was what was removed for the electric, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else on the final page?
Because it affects the total.
Anything else, uh, anywhere on the budget at this point, because we're?
Mr. Moderator?
Yeah, could you use the microphone?
Mr. Moderator, do you need a motion to amend the total?
No, I don't. What I do need, however, is, the motion is still on the floor, so if you look at one of these line items and say, wait a second, I do want to change something, you got a little bit of time, in the meantime, could accountant or town administrator give me a number?
Beep beep. I just had a question on the electric with National Grid. Are they, like, do they look into other suppliers and stuff like that for, like, cheaper rates? Because I know I have electric from National Grid, but I also go through another supplier, which is like half the rate. So I was just looking at, is this National Grid or do they look into other things for energy?
Can somebody answer that question?
Mr. Moderator through you. The electricity for the town is purchased through a, um, we, we have a contract for a supply. We locked in fifteen cents per kilowatt hour prior to it going up to thirty-three cents because I saw it coming, so we, we got a, we got a contract.
So you locked in recently?
We locked in, like, last summer.
Okay. Well, just look into the contract, I'm just saying, because there's other things like waivers.
Well, we can't at this point because it's a contract.
So, I, I don't want a conversation going on, I just want her to answer the question.
That's a yes, that's a yes.
Okay.
Okay.
There you go, thank you very much.
Excellent, you're very welcome. All right, all right. All right, you had a good long time to think about this thing. Uh, so I'm now gonna state the motion as it now stands, that the town vote to raise and appropriate the amended amount, if you want to wait this down, get ready, nine million, nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety-nine cents. Do I have that correct? Good. Okay, to defray the expenses of the town, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, uh, as, as it's been, as the budget has been amended, uh, so far. Uh, okay, so, any further discussion whatsoever? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? Uh, the budget has been adopted. Amen. All right, article number three.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make a motion that the town vote to transfer from free cash eight thousand dollars to pay prior year's unemployment charges to the Department of Unemployment Assistance.
A motion has been made that the town transfer from free cash a sum of eight thousand dollars to pay prior year's unemployment wages to the Department of Unemployment, Unemployment Assistance. Is there a second? There is a second. Uh, I just want to let you know, uh, because this is a previous year's budget, it's gonna be a four-fifths vote, four-fifths vote, so eighty percent of you gotta say yes. All right, uh, is there any discussion, uh, on the motion? Yeah.
Just as a point of reference, the reason that we have this bill is because when we were in between treasurers during COVID, there were fraudulent claims filed against the town for unemployment. And because there was nobody present at that time who actually challenged those claims, the statute of limitations has run out, which means we have to pay that bill. So if you choose not to pay it, it's just gonna get bigger.
Ah, well, that's an incentive. Is there any further debate? All those in favor of transferring eight thousand bucks from free cash to pay prior year's unemployment wages to the Department of Unemployment Assistance, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? It's unanimous, we got the four-fifths vote. Article number four.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I move that the town vote to transfer forty thousand dollars from water department water surplus account to the water department water system capital expense account.
A motion has been made that the town transfer the sum of forty thousand dollars from the water department water surplus account to the water department water systems capital expense account. Uh, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
There is a second. Is there any discussion or debate on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of transferring forty thousand dollars from the water department water surplus account to the water department water system capital expense account, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? The ayes have it, the motion's been adopted. Article number five.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Move that the town vote to transfer, um, four hundred, I'm sorry, four, forty-eight thousand five hundred dollars from the ambulance receipt reserve account to fund the fiscal twenty twenty-four ambulance expense account.
A motion has been made that the town transfer the sum of forty-eight thousand five hundred bucks to the ambulance receipt reserve account or from, uh, the ambulance receipt reserve account to fund the fiscal twenty twenty-four ambulance expense account. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? The motion is to transfer forty-eight thousand five hundred bucks from the ambulance receipt reserve account to fund the twenty twenty-four ambulance expense account. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? The ayes have it, the motion has been adopted. Article number six.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion that the town vote to transfer two hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and ninety dollars from the ambulance receipt reserve account to fund the fiscal twenty twenty-four ambulance wages account.
A motion has been made that the town transfer two hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and ninety dollars from the ambulance receipt reserve account to fund the fiscal twenty twenty-four ambulance wages account. Is there a second? There's a second, is there any debate on the motion? All those in favor of transferring the sum of two hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and ninety dollars from the ambulance receipt reserve account to fund the fiscal twenty twenty-four ambulance wages account, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? The ayes have it, motion is adopted. Article seven.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash nine thousand dollars to fund the centerline painting of town roads.
A motion has been made that the town transfer from free cash nine thousand bucks to fund the centerline painting of town roads, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Uh, is there any discussion on the motion to transfer from free cash nine thousand bucks to paint the centerlines in town? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say no? The ayes have it, motion is adopted. I think we're on article number eight.
It is, it is indeed me.
Your turn.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash twenty-five thousand dollars to fund the roads improvement account.
A motion has been made to transfer from free cash twenty-five thousand bucks to, uh, fund the road improvements account. Is there a second? Is there any debate on the motion? Is there any debate on the motion? All those in favor of transferring $25,000 from free cash to fund the road improvements account, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article number nine. You want to come up?
Yeah, you may not like this.
If you're okay with it. I don't have a motion. Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate...
Transfer from free cash.
Transfer from free cash, the sum of $12,825, to purchase protective clothing for the fire department.
Did you say $12,825?
Yes.
Okay. A motion is made to transfer $12,825 from free cash to purchase protective clothing for the fire department. Is there a second? There is a second. Is there any discussion?
Explanation, if I may. Within the last few days, we received a notice from our vendor that prices went up 35%.
Oh, that stinks.
Yeah, oh, very much so. Yeah. It's not eggs, it's not milk, it's not gas, it's... Yeah.
Protective clothing for you guys.
Yeah. Yeah.
You want to say anything more?
Never.
Okay, never. Yeah, I don't blame you. Okay, is there any further debate on the question? Okay. All those in favor of transferring $12,825 from free cash to purchase protective clothing for the fire department, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? The ayes have it. You got your $12,825. Chief? Article number 10.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash to the fleet repair replace account $18,000 to make repairs to tanker one.
Motion has been made to transfer $18,000 from fleet repair replace account to make repairs to tanker number one. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of transferring $18,000 bucks from free cash to the fleet repair replace account to make repairs to tanker number one, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? The ayes have it. The motion passes. Article number 11.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Move that the town vote to set the FY 2024 spending limits as presented in the warrant article number 11 authorized pursuant to Chapter 4, Financial Affairs, Section 8 of the town's general bylaw.
Is it Chapter 4 or Chapter 5?
I'm sorry. Chapter 5.
Thank you. Okay. So, a motion has been made that the town set the fiscal year 2024 spending limits as presented in the warrant booklet, article number 11 authorized pursuant to Chapter 5, Financial Affairs, Section 8 of the town's general bylaws. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Is there any debate? All those in favor of accepting those spending limits, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? The ayes have it. Motion is adopted. Article number 12.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Make a motion that the town vote to rescind the borrowing authorizations for the authorized but unissued borrowing in the amount of $206,533.05 originally approved by votes taken in Articles 20 and 21 of the 6/26/20 town meeting as printed in the warrant.
Boys, this is a real fun motion. The motion is that the town rescind the borrowing authorization for the authorized but unissued borrowing in the amount of $206,533.05 originally approved by votes taken in Articles 20 and 21 at the 6/26/2020 town meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any discussion on the motion to rescind the borrowing authorization of things that we didn't borrow? I just... This is a great motion. I just can't tell you how much I love this one. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? The ayes have it. We rescinded the authorization to borrow $206,533.05. Article number 13.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $13,100 for longevity pay for the employees.
A motion has been made that the town raise and appropriate the sum of money in the amount of $13,100 for longevity pay for the employees. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Is there any debate?
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion that we raise and appropriate...
To amend.
To amend to $31,150.
$31,150.
Fifty... Yeah, 150.
Yeah, $31,150 bucks. Okay. All right, so, we have a motion to amend. The motion that was made to raise and appropriate the sum of money of $13,100 for longevity pay for employees, and we want to change $13,100 to $31,150. Is there a second to this motion to amend? Did I hear a second? I heard a second. Oh, there he is. Okay. It was like an echo someplace. Sorry, Rudy. Okay. Debate.
Mr. Moderator, it is my understanding that this article is only for full-time employees. It leaves out our emergency services, fire and EMS, of which we have 17 employees with greater than five years' experience. Those 17 employees have a total combined experience with this town of 405 years. Up until this decade, most of the firefighters got no pay for training, no pay for fire calls. That is new. Providing them with a small bonus is a very small incentive for those personnel.
Okay. Any other debate on the motion?
Matt, I got a question for you before you leave. Did you say you're not getting paid for fire calls? Or...
Fire... Mr. Moderator, firefighters only recently began being paid for structure fire calls. When I first joined the fire department 20-something years ago, we were paid for brush fires only, not structures, not training. Any training we did was on our own. If we wanted to travel for training, we did that on our own. The town did not reimburse us for any of that.
What about EMTs? If they go out, let's just say, they go out to a car accident and six of you show up to help out, is that true? You get a base pay of three or four hours? Or can you explain that to me?
Your EMS personnel, we have two personnel on duty each shift, and they are paid a stipend for that shift, $50. If they do a call, they are paid an hourly rate. If we have a motor vehicle accident, you could... We're going to get fire response as well. And fire does have minimum pay for firefighters.
No.
One hour or three hours? Firefighter, minimum pay. Half hour is the minimum for firefighters.
Okay. Did I answer your question? You still have... You still have about 20 seconds or so.
I was on the advisory board, and I was chairman at the time, and we voted this in for you, that when you made calls, if six of you show up at an accident, and one of our questions was, if six of you show up, do you all get the same pay, a base pay? And I think it was three hours. And Beth Crawford was on the board at that time, too. I just want to know if... I understand that when we voted that in, you were getting... The EMT workers get X number of hours just to show up. Not complaining, I just want to know what the dollars and cents, if that's true.
Okay, your time's up, so...
Chris Gorman, 32 Pine. My question to the plant, to the board, is if they increase the price or the warrant, does that mean the fire department is included in said pay for the longevity? Or does this just add more money without them being included?
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to refer this to Town Council.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. As you all know, my name is Jeffrey Blake. I'm your town council, and thank you, everybody, for having me. Okay. So, the question was, is, does the amendment make the fire... I think it said firefighters part of the longevity pay. The answer to that is, the question simply increases the funding. It does nothing for the longevity. And I also was being handed a policy that I guess I'm going to have to read. But to answer your question, no, it does not include the firefighters. It just increases the amount of the line item.
I'd like to add that our fire department is invaluable, and they should be included. And I hope the board takes this up and adds them and the EMS to the longevity fund. They definitely deserve it.
Go ahead.
Mr. Moderator, we only get paid for the amount of time we're on the call. It's a minimum of a half hour. Nobody gets three or four hours for showing up. And we have our two people there, but the rest are firefighters. Occasionally, if it's something really serious, we have to have extra firefighter, extra EMTs on to help out. A lot of times, they'll show up and say, "Oh, I'm not needed," and they'll go back. I just didn't want people to think that we were getting paid three or four hours for not doing anything.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to put a second amendment on the floor indicating that if additional funds are authorized by the town meeting, that those funds will be directed for the payment of longevity explicitly for the EMS and firefighters.
Oh, heavens.
Who are not currently included.
So, I need you to give me that in writing. I really... That one's kind of tough. I'm not going to write that down. So, in the meantime... So, just so to be clear where we are, she still has the floor, okay? And so, she's going to offer me amendment. Once she gives it to me in writing, I'll state the amendment, and we'll look for a second, and we'll go on from there. But for the moment, we're still debating the question, and the question is to raise and appropriate, or to amend the longevity pay for employees from $13,100 to $31,150. Okay? That's the question.
Yes. Tim Rowan, and my question was to Attorney Blake. The existing article just says employees. It doesn't differentiate between full or part-time. So, I think it does cover their employees, attorney. It's because it simply says pay for employees.
Thank you. I was looking at a policy that had full and part-time employees in there, and it's my understanding that the town's policy did not include the firefighters and EMTs. So, if you want... If the increase is for firefighters and EMTs, I strongly suggest that you take the select board members amendment.
Okay. So, the amendment that the select woman is making is going to complicate this a little bit more than I think we really need to. So, what I would like to do is take up the motion to amend the $13,100 bucks to $31,150. And then, once we decide that question, we'll take up the amendment that the select woman would like to offer. So, that's how I want to proceed. So, again, the question that is before us at this point in time is whether or not we want to amend the amount of money that we're giving for longevity pay for employees from $13,100 to $31,150. Is there any further debate on that question?
Hi. Patricia Washburn, Naples Street, Brookton.
Can you swing the microphone down a little bit? I know you got a loud voice, so do I, but, you know, believe it or not, back there it's hard.
Stop talking... Stop picking on a challenge, high-challenged person. I can't help but...
My deepest...
Anyhow. My question is, is what is the overall impact of this article? Not just this year, but the overall impact to the town longevity? So, we're talking about longevity here. We're talking about, I'm assuming, that the longer an employee is an employee at the town, you're going to, what, get more money? Or they're going to get compensated more retirement? What exactly is this longevity supposed to be? So, can we get an explanation, number one, what it actually is? What the intent is of how people are going to be reimbursed for this longevity? And number two, what is the impact of the town, not just this year, but longevity? What's the impact going to be over the next 20 years on our town budget?
Can somebody answer the question?
Mr. Moderator, through you. Mrs. Washburn, because this is a warrant article, this is only for fiscal year 24, this gives no commitment to the town to provide longevity bonuses in any future years. We are only voting on it for fiscal year 24 in this meeting. And with regards to this compensation, my understanding is that the longevity bonus is not part of their salary, and therefore, it is not subject to COLA. It is not part of... It does not bump up the town's obligation for its contribution to their retirement. And I will defer to the treasurer and accountant if I am misspeaking in that area.
Do you... Excuse me. I'm sorry. Did you have any further to say? You got about 10 seconds.
Okay. I guess the whole thing of it is, is why are we giving it to them in the first place? Are they not getting a raise? Are they not getting their benefits that they're receiving? I mean, why... And who... How long do they have to work for the town in order for them to be classified longevity employees?
Okay. So, I'm going to allow the question to be answered. How long does somebody have to work to get paid longevity pay? If we got an answer to that, other than that, you're all done.
Mr. Moderator, through you.
It's actually in the warrant book.
In the warrant book, it specifies the longevity tiers, and it starts at five years of accumulated service.
Okay. Thank you. So...
I'm done. I'm not done.
You've had two minutes. You've had two minutes.
Guess what?
You've had two minutes.
Can I take your two minutes, David? Oh, okay. I'll take my husband's two minutes. How's that, Bill?
Somebody's got to ask you a question. If your husband... So, I'm sorry. You are all done. If somebody asks you a question in the future...
This is the town call. This is the town meeting.
I'm going to warn you once more.
To ask how much we want to ask and not be subject to a time.
I am going to warn you once more. Otherwise, you're going to be removed from the meeting. I'm warning you.
And I'm going to make sure I call the state on you.
Okay. Marty Banish, Advisory Committee. Marty Banish, Advisory Committee. My question is, why is this... Now here at an annual town meeting, when these issues take time to resolve and they should be done through...
We... I'm sorry. We need to speak to the question of the amendment, which is to amend this motion from $13,100 to $31,150.
Then I have no comment.
Okay. Any further debate on amending this motion? Mr. Moderator, remove the question. There's been a motion to move the question. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any objection to closing debate at this point? Okay, there's an objection. So, all those in favor of closing debate, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? The ayes have it. Two-thirds vote. Debate is closed. The motion before us is a motion to amend the amount of money that we're going to raise and appropriate for longevity pay for employees from $13,100 to... and appropriate for longevity pay for employees from $13,100 to $31,150. We will then return to the main motion and debate that further. So, all those in favor of changing $13,100 to $31,150, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes had it. The motion to amend is adopted. So the motion as it stands right now is that the town raise and appropriate the sum of money in the amount of $31,150 for longevity pay for employees. I would recognize the select woman. She wants to make a motion to amend. Do you want me to just read it? I will read the motion. If I can read your writing, I'm a heavens. No, it's better than mine. Yours is better than mine. Okay, so move that, the town allocate the funds over and above $31,150 for longevity pay for employees to be authorized for, no, I can't read it. Yeah, that'd be better.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we amend the current motion that the town allocate the funds over and above $13,000. Move that the town allocate the funds over and above $13,100 for longevity pay for employees to be authorized for disbursement to the EMT and firefighters.
Is there a second to that motion to amend?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any discussion? So we're only amending this motion to add that the town allocate the funds over and above the $31,150 for the...
Or $13,000. $13,100 for longevity pay for employees. The, everything between $13,100 and $31,150 to be allocated.
Okay, all right. So let me restate the motion to amend, which is to add to this, to this motion, that the town allocate the funds over and above the $13,100 for longevity pay for employees to be authorized for, I can't read that word, disbursement to EMT and firefighters. And there's been a second to the motion, I believe? Is there a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was. Okay, good. Debate, the motion to amend.
Chris Gorman, 32 Pine. My question is to the board, if we do not pass this motion, does that extra money then go back to the original employees that are full-time?
No, because the chart, the longevity schematic, has very specific number of years and specific amounts per employee. So that money would actually just sit in the warrant article. It wouldn't, it would just sit in the bank. It wouldn't go to anyone else.
Thank you.
Marty Banish, Advisory Committee. This motion appears to be a knee-jerk reaction to what's been requested here at this meeting. And it seems that the proper method or methodology for handling this situation, a personnel situation, is to have it reviewed by the Personnel Board and approved by the Board of Selectmen. So I am not in favor of this proposal. Okay. Any further debate? Motion to amend the longevity pay. Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. I just have one factual point. If the gentleman who made that motion, if they could, where did the number come from? I mean, I know you have, you said it's a number of them. One moment, one moment. If you're talking about the $31,150, that's already been decided. We're not gonna talk about that any further. The town meeting voted the amendment. I mean, is there a wrong figure here? Is there some predisposed figure that... Okay, there isn't, okay. Is it good? Okay, okay. So, we have a motion to amend the longevity pay article here to add that the town allocate the funds over and above $13,100 for longevity pay for employees to be authorized for disbursement to EMT and firefighters. Is there any further debate on the motion to amend?
I'm Linda Lincoln, and I'm the chairman of the Personnel Board. And my opinion is that we should pass over this article, and I think it should be discussed by the Personnel Board, where everyone fits in, including the Fire Department and the
Okay, so, so, no, wait. I'm sorry, I'm not gonna recognize anybody, because I just wanna explain what's going on. So, Linda, there's no motion to pass over. When we get to the main, back to the main motion, because we're still on a motion to amend, I believe, then you can talk about maybe making the motion to, motion to postpone indefinitely. Okay, which would kill it, and then they'd take it up at some other time. Okay? So, at the moment, I wanna talk about the motion to amend this longevity pay motion, which is to, that the town allocate the funds over and above $13,100 for longevity pay for employees to be authorized for disbursement to EMT and firefighters. Is there any further debate on this particular motion to amend? I'm sorry.
Do you mean to include the EMT and firefighters?
The motion as it's been presented to me is that we add the language that says, "The town allocate the funds over and above $13,100 for longevity pay for employees to be authorized for disbursement to EMT and firefighters." That's what I was given as a motion. It's been seconded, and we've been debating it. Is there any, so I have someone at the microphone. If you, if you have a problem with this, then why don't you come on up, and we can deal with that. Go ahead.
All I gotta say is, five years for longevity is a little ridiculous. Ten, ten to fifteen years would be more like it.
Thank you.
I'm questioning the way that the amendment is written. The way that the amendment sounds, the way that you read it, does not say that they include the EMT and firefighters, which meaning that it's only for the EMT and firefighters. It's not saying all of the employees, including EMT and firefighters. If you read it again, I think the language is skewed.
Actually, would you please address that question? Because I actually understand what she's saying. And so, because it's basically saying, anything above $13,100 be allocated toward EMT and firefighters.
And that's it?
So that's it.
So that means that the first $13,100 is...
Speaking of the microphone.
All right. So the intent of the phrasing is that up to $13,100 was calculated and is, and is under the purview of the policy book. The policy book indicates that it's full-time employees. The math that was included in the original number on the warrant article is sufficient funds to pay the longevity bonuses for the employees that qualify under the verbiage of the policy book. The intent of the amendment is to clarify, and it's in line with Mr. Gorman's question, that just because the town meeting allocated the additional funds to $31,150 to allow for the payment of the longevity bonus to EMTs and firefighters, there's no explicit verbiage in the policy that would allow the disbursement to those employees based on their work classification and category. By voting that amendment, the intent of the amendment is to allow disbursement to personnel not currently qualified, under the personnel bylaw, to receive the funds that the town meeting has indicated that they want directed to those personnel. So the verbiage does say that fundamentally. So 13-1, as indicating the original motion, is for the employees that are qualified under the personnel handbook. The over and above is indicated to be directed to the EMTs and firefighters as currently approved from a total fund perspective by this town meeting.
That makes sense to me. So, in other words, you're right. You're correct. The rest of it is gonna be allocated to EMT and firefighters. So, do you have anything else?
That seems like a lot of money. It's a lot of people.
Okay, okay. We got somebody at the microphone.
Okay, so, I mean, that just seems like, you're talking about $13,100 just for the EMT and firefighters?
No, it's $13,100 for the, for the regular town employees.
So we're talking about $20,000 just for the EMS and firefighters?
You've already voted at, at the town meeting has already voted to allocate...
I'll speak to that, select woman.
Okay. But my question is of the entire, adding the EMT and firefighters on, we're talking about allocating $20,000 just to the EMS and firefighters?
Twenty-five-five to be exact.
Okay. So that seems to me like an awful lot of money for just that department, those two departments versus all the other employees in town.
Okay, your time is up. Thank you.
But they're only part-time. On call.
I just have a question. My name's Dennis Tucker, I live at 2 Kimball Street. The difference between the $13,100 and the $31,150, is that based on the number of EMTs and firefighters and their years of service? Has that been calculated? Is that the correct amount?
That's the correct amount, yes.
Mr. Moderator, this is Chris Frigella, 36 Lake Road. And I just wanna say that the longevity is Donna for 46 years, Herb for 46 years, Steve for 42 years, Bill for 38 years, Dave for 33 years, Matt for 31 years, Terry for 29 years, Phil for 25 years, Charlie for 21 years, Linda for 21 years, Jeff for 18 years, Matt for 15 years, Dan for 12, Ashley for 10, or six. I mean, it's there. I mean, longevity's there. I mean, I think this is overdue, and that we should support it.
Is there any further debate? The motion to, you get, careful. The motion to amend the longevity pay to add the wording that the town allocate the funds over and above $13,100 for longevity pay for employees to be authorized, to be authorized for disbursement to EMT and firefighters. Is there any further debate on the motion to amend? Okay, all those in favor of amending this accordingly, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes had it. The motion has now been amended. So the motion reads that the town raise and appropriate the sum of money in the amount of $31,150 for longevity pay for the employees, and that the town allocate funds over and above $13,100 for longevity pay for employees to be authorized for disbursement to EMT and firefighters. That is the main motion as it stands right now. Is there any further debate on the main motion? All those in favor of adopting this motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes had it. The motion has been adopted, as amended. All right, Article number 14.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to appropriate $70,000 from Cable Peg Receipt Reserve Fund for the purpose of funding cable-related costs, expenses, fees, payroll, and general oversight of public access cable for fiscal year 2024.
All right. The motion has been made that the town appropriate $70,000 from the Cable Peg Receipt Reserve Fund for the purpose of funding cable-related costs, expenses, fees, payroll, and general oversight of public access cable for fiscal year 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any debate? All those in favor of appropriating $70,000 from the Cable Peg Receipt Reserve Fund for the purposes of funding basically cable access?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
I make a motion to pass over this article?
Are you, hold on, hold on, hold on, one second, hold on. So what you really wanna do, this isn't really a pass, you wanna postpone indefinitely, is what you really wanna do?
For, I wanna postpone indefinitely.
Okay, that would kill it, okay? I just want you, no, it'll be gone, okay? I just wanna tell you that, okay? So, a motion has been made to postpone indefinitely, did I call for a second on this? I did, right?
No.
I didn't? Oh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. Sorry about that. Okay, there's a motion to postpone indefinitely, and postponing indefinitely will kill this if you vote yes for it, okay? It'll be all over, and we'll go to the next article. Just wanna make sure that everybody's clear on what this motion does. Is there a second to postpone this motion indefinitely?
He just seconded.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
There's a second. Thank you. All right, go ahead, debate.
Cable access hasn't been on the cable TV in years. So why would we spend $70,000 for something we're not getting? I mean, you can go on YouTube, but even on YouTube, we're not seeing the Selectmen's meeting, we're not seeing any of the other meetings. So we're gonna spend $70,000 for payroll for things that we just don't have. So why are we gonna expend that money? I understand that there's money sitting in a reserve account, but that doesn't mean that we need to allocate it for anything that we're not getting the services for.
Okay, you still have about a minute.
Okay. Well, I mean, unless somebody can explain to me why it's not on cable access, why we don't see anything, that would be a great idea, but if they want the money for the payroll, then at least they should do the job. And we're not getting that done.
Mr. Moderator, through you?
No. You can keep speaking, unless you want somebody to answer a question for you.
Well, let me, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Holcraft, when's the last time that it was on, cable access was on the TV?
Five years.
And how is our equipment that we have from the cable access?
Would you please come to the microphone, so everybody can hear you? She's asking questions, and people need to hear.
Five years ago is when we stopped. It hasn't been on for five years. YouTube is not really on. The equipment was in fairly good shape when we stopped five years ago, and I do not know the condition of the equipment right now. But we definitely need to get this back on, so the townspeople know what's really going on in this town.
Okay, you've got about 10 seconds.
I have another question.
You really don't have time for another question. Your time is up. I'm sorry, you're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So there's a motion on the floor to postpone this motion indefinitely, which is gonna kill it, okay? Is there any further debate on the motion to postpone indefinitely? All those in favor of, so if you vote yes, it's gonna kill the motion, and we're all done. We'll go to the next article. If you vote no, we're gonna continue debating this, this motion, okay? All those in favor of postponing indefinitely, please say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes had it. We're now back to the main motion, which is to appropriate $70,000 from the Cable Peg Receipt Reserve Fund for the purposes of funding cable access. Is there any further debate on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor of appropriating $70,000 from the Cable Peg Receipt Reserve Fund, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes had it. The motion is adopted. Article 15.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion that the town vote to raise and appropriate $568.50 to fund the plantings and care of plants on the Triangle Memorial Beds and gazebo.
A motion has been made to raise and appropriate $568.50 to fund plantings and care of plantings on the Triangle Memorial Beds and gazebo. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion on the motion? All right, all those in favor of raising and appropriate $568.50 to plant flowers around the Triangle Memorial Beds and gazebo, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes had it. The motion is adopted. Article number 16.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash $12,000 for a lawnmower for the cemetery department to replace the 2005 Bobcat mower.
Motion has been made that the town transfer from free cash $12,000 for a lawnmower for the cemetery department to replace the 2005 Bobcat mower. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Is there any discussion on the motion to spend... Is there any discussion on the motion to spend twelve thousand bucks on a mower for the cemetery? All those in favor of transferring from free cash twelve thousand dollars for a lawnmower for the cemetery department to replace the two thousand and five Bobcat mower, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes had it. The motion is adopted. Article seventeen.
Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash sixty thousand dollars for the Brookfield Cemetery Department to pave two roads plus incidental costs.
Motion has been made to transfer sixty thousand dollars from free cash for the Brookfield Cemetery Department to pave two roads plus incidental costs. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Is there any discussion or debate on the motion?
I'm Peter Masuso, Fifteen River Street. Along with my former colleague on the commission, Wayne Yuskowski, we served for fifteen years as cemetery commissioners, beginning in two thousand. We appreciate the volunteer work the current commission does, as well as the efforts of Mike, the superintendent, cemetery caretakers Herb and Jim Milner, brothers Ryan and Donald with the Highway Department. Cemetery always looks nice, it's truly a standout in the town. Working closely with Ron Kuchar and other members of the Brookfield Historical Commission, the Massachusetts Historical Commission, as well as Historic Landscape Architecture and Preservation Preserv- Preservanus, a preservation management plan for the Brookfield Cemetery was developed in two thousand and approved by the Massachusetts Historic Commission. The purpose of this large project was to complete all necessary documentation for submission of a nomination to the National Register of Historic Places and to develop a long-term plan for preserving, maintaining, and protecting the cemetery landscape, which I hold in my hand, is not Kyle's coffee. And these were given to the commissioners at the time, as well as to the superintendent. And this one comes from the Historic Commission, but it exists today. Brookfield Cemetery was listed in the National Register of Historic Places in two thousand and three. It dates back to the very early seventeen hundreds, is still in use today in the exact same location. It most likely is the only cemetery in the country that can make this claim. In speaking with the cemetery superintendent this morning regarding the paving material that is planning to be used in this article?
You got twenty seconds.
He told me that it was asphalt. The intent here is good, but it specifically says asphalt should be removed and prohibited from future use, unquote. Rather, it should be a chip seal type of bituminous asphalt with a road gravel aggregate used.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
All right, yeah. Sure.
So Mike Semit, Mike Siri, cemetery superintendent, and I just do want to follow up on some of the remarks that Peter did make. It is true that we have a preservation plan, and there is a recommendation that the material that Peter suggested be used. However, I do want to make it clear that it doesn't affect any future grants that we have or may be eligible for if we did use the asphalt. And right now, currently, there's two roads that are in serious disrepair. I mean, if you've driven down there, take a sedan, and on one of those roads, it's really raised up and it's problematic, and it does need to be addressed. But again, I want to state that in speaking to the person that originally did the cemetery assessment for Mass Historical, I spoke with him today, and what he, what he told me is that when you have pre-existing material, like the asphalt that is there today, it will not jeopardize any future grants because it is pre-existing. And there's four roads in the new part of the cemetery that are asphalt, and some of that's broken up pretty serious. And I, I personally feel like we have to address this. I think the, probably the best solution, and I don't think it takes away from the cemetery, is to use the asphalt, and it's, it's not taking away because it is pre-existing asphalt there, so I would hope that we could move forward with this proposal. Thank you.
Donald Fagnell, question is to the library commissioners, why didn't you consider using chip seal on this project? Cemetery, I'm sorry.
That's okay. One of the issues with the chip seal, and yes, again, it's a recommendation, but it can be problematic. When it is used, and then we plow on that, it really creates a mess. And so, you know, we're already dealing with that when we do plowing at the cemetery right now, when we have the broken asphalt, we have a serious cleanup of that asphalt that gets scattered amongst the graves and so forth, creates a mess. The concern is, anybody that's used that kind of material is, it does break up during the winter when there's plowing, and it, it creates a mess. The asphalt solution is more permanent and it's, it's more stable for plowing, and so that's the general reason. Thanks.
You got about a minute.
So the sixty thousand dollars is going to put a base into whatever roads you do so we won't be back to have the same problem?
Is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct. Do you want them to talk more? All right.
And, and sixty, sixty thousand dollars is going to get, which sections of roads?
Section C and I believe B, where the ones in most disrepair, I think it's section C. If you've been down there, you'll see that there's, in the middle of the road, it's raised up significantly, and it's, it's creating a bit of a problem. So this money would cover two roads right now. And of course, we would never, ever use asphalt in, in what's been designated as the historical part of the cemetery. Those are pre-existing dirt roads. We try to keep up on those on an annual basis. You'll notice there's some potholes here and there, we fill them in. But again, it comes back to, the material that's used now and that's on there is asphalt, so it makes sense from our standpoint to go forward with that, that kind of pavement. It's a lot more smooth, a lot more stable.
Carmen Eaton, Thirteen West Main. I was on the Historical Commission when we put the plan together, that.
Good and wild and.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's okay. Thank you. Am I talking? All right, okay, good, 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 good. This hype, this hype technology gets me, you know? I was on the commission when we put the preventive plan, the preservation plan together, which was the basis for getting the historical designation. Cemetery Commission at that time supported it, Historical Commission supported it. I disagree with Mike for saying it's a real problem. I've been down there, I've walked it, I've driven on it. It's not pretty, but asphalt is something that they said that we should not be doing. In fact, they recommended we take the asphalt out of there. I would urge that we look at the alternatives. Do nothing? Skrape off the quote hump that Mike says is a problem? I have, I have a low car, and I drive through there with my car and there's no problem. Chip seal, as they recommend, or the asphalt that Mike represents. But I think it requires further study and support from the Historical Commission as well, and talking to somebody who really knows about this. But sixty thousand doesn't seem like it's going to do much of a job. I would encourage that we either pass over this article or we consider looking at it more thoroughly than we have with this article.
Is there a committee or commission that would, that should be studying this?
I would recommend that the Historical Commission be involved, they were involved in the original, it is a historic site, and, and.
So, hold on. The reason why I'm asking is, you could send it to some committee and have them study it and come back with a report if that's what you want to do.
Yeah, yes, yes. And I'm not sure it needs to be a committee, just a group of people who are qualified.
You'd need to specify who it goes to.
I would, I expect, you want me to? Yes, I would say members of the Historical Commission, a couple of members from the Historical Commission, a couple of members from the, the, uh, once, somebody from the Highway Department, perhaps, somebody from the Cemetery Commission, and maybe a couple at-large people. I'm not sure we need a committee.
It needs to be a committee of some sort, otherwise, I'm not going to accept them all.
All right. But I think, I think it really needs further study.
Hold on one second.
Sure.
So, you have said that you would like to commit this to a commission made up of two members from the Historical Commission, I think you said two members from the Highway Department?
Uh, eight, eight members.
One member from the Highway Department. One member from the Cemetery Committee.
Two, two members.
Two members from the Cemetery Committee. And what else?
A couple of at-large members.
Um, two at-large members?
Yes.
To be appointed by whom?
The select board. I don't know. I'll take advice from someone.
So, there's a motion that's been made to commit this to a committee made up of two members from the Historical Commission, to be decided by the Historical Commission, one member from the Highway Department, presumably to be appointed by the superintendent, two members from the Cemetery Committee, and two members at-large that would be appointed by the select board. Is that what you want to do?
Yes.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a second. Is there any debate on the motion to commit this? If this gets committed, it'll go to the, it'll go to this committee that we're forming, and they'll come back with a report. When? When do you want them to report back? To the select board?
I would say three months.
Three months. Report back to the select board in three months. Okay. All right, is there any discussion on the motion? Do you want to discuss it at all, or somebody else is back there wants to speak to it, so you want to give it?
I want to support the motion from an environmental perspective. I know that our, I, I believe that our ConCon is still empty, so we can't ask for members of the Conservation Commission on this.
We have ConCon.
Although here, then, is it possible for me to amend the amendment to ask for a member of the Conservation Commission to be on there? Because asphalt is really bad for our environment. Any place that makes noise.
Is that what you would like to do?
Yes, thank you.
All right, there's a, there's a motion to amend forming this committee, does this add someone from the Conservation Commission? Is there any objection to just adding that person to this committee that we're attempting to reform? Okay, so we're back to the main motion, which now, let's see, ConCon, which now is going to form a committee to study this question, two members from the Historical Commission, one member from the Highway Department, two members from the Cemetery Committee, two members at-large to be appointed by the select board, and one member from the Conservation Commission to report back to the select board in three months. Is there any further debate?
Yes, Pat O'Day, Twenty-Seven Weather Road.
Yeah.
I am a cemetery commissioner.
Okay.
And I'd like to know if this money's going to go away if we vote this away. In other words, can we save this money to do something with the project in free cash that we're going to have to wait for next year? Now, these roads are bad, I don't care what anybody says. I mean, they're bad. I'm worried about the elderly falling, and we're not touching the historic part of the, of the grave sites. We just want two roads so that people can manage those roads easily and get in and out. That's all we're asking. So I'm asking, can we still have that sixty thousand in free cash after this committee looks at the whole thing?
Depends on the report of the committee, but I would think yes.
Well, thinking and appropriating it is a different story, right?
Who can answer the question? What? So, as it stands right now, okay, if this motion, I'm sorry, if this motion is adopted, it's going to form a committee of these people, and they're going to report back in three months. That's it.
But I would like to see that sixty thousand reserved somehow so that we can do the work.
Okay, so what I think you're saying is you oppose this.
Oppose what? I oppose not paving, I want to see that paved.
No, so the motion that's on the floor is to form a committee.
I'm okay with that.
Okay.
But I'd like to reserve the money so that we'll have it to work with when there's a.
Hold on.
Hi, Lori Barkis, Town Accountant, through you, Mr. Moderator. The sixty thousand, if you so voted and it approves, it will be reserved in an article account, which will be called paving two roads in the cemetery. If the committee comes back and has a disapproving opinion and does not choose to go ahead with the paving, at the end of the fiscal year, the committee can, and the Board of Selectmen can choose to either let the sixty thousand go back into the town's free cash, or at the next town meeting, we can vote to reallocate the sixty thousand dollars to another warrant article for the cemetery or for something else.
So to the moderator, I understand what the lady's saying, but if they decide to do chip instead, we're, we don't have any money unless, unless we approve the money now, is what I'm saying.
The article just says paving.
Well, we're amending, we're amending the article.
Right, but it just, it doesn't say asphalt specifically, it just says paving of two roads. So, so Mr. Moderator, through you.
It says asphalt.
Mr. Moderator?
Says pave two roads. Yeah, go ahead.
Can I propose an amendment?
So, I'm a little fearful we're getting a little bit too complicated.
I, I don't want it to be simple, I just want to make sure there's going to be money there for us to be able to do this project.
What's your word change?
Okay, are we going to that town council?
No, no.
Yes, he wants to speak.
Okay, so the way this is right now, okay, the motion to commit this to this committee will not save the sixty thousand dollars for anything.
That's all right.
There'll be a report back.
That's all right.
So if you want to spend the sixty thousand dollars now, then I would oppose this, this motion to commit this.
Well, I don't want to spend it now, but I'd like to save it so we could spend it later when they approve.
Okay, I, let's just make a decision on the, on the committee. Let's make a decision on whether or not to commit this to a committee, okay? And you've had more than two minutes, so I've got to, I got to move this along a little bit. I get it. Okay?
Are I going to say my name each time?
No.
Okay. As for the Conservation Commission, I am chair of that, that group, that board, and I have a question. Is this project anywhere near a wetland or in the buffer zone of a wetland? So then my follow-up question's that would be, does ConCon have any responsibility or even, even any say legally on that issue?
Whatever the, whatever they, whatever the report that's issued out of this committee.
Okay.
That would be all.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Moderator, can we modify the amendment that Kermit, that Kermit proposed by including the wording stating that if the project is approved by the committee, that the money can be put in a, or can the money be put into a reserve now, waiting for approval of the committee? And that way, the money would be there for the paving, but it would only get allocated if the committee approved?
Uh, no, is the answer to your question?
Is it allowed to make an amendment to this?
Uh, depends on what it is. What do you want to do?
And that $60,000 be transferred from free cash and set aside for the pavement and/or improvement of the roads in question in the cemetery.
Hold on. For the improvement of cemetery roads. Is that what you said? Anybody object to this? Alright. So, the, oh, I guess, is there a second? Is anybody object to this thing? No? Okay. Alright, so, your motion to amend has been adopted, so the motion now reads to commit this article to a commission made up of two members of the historical commission, one member of the highway department, two members of the cemetery committee, or, yeah, committee, commissions, two at-large appointed by the selectmen, and one from the CONCON. Any further debate on the motion to commit?
Is it amended? Is it allowed to make an amendment to this?
Uh, depends on what it is. What do you want to do?
And that $60,000 be set aside for payment for pavement and/or improvements to two roads in the cemetery.
From free cash, correct. Read that to me again.
I've got to put my glasses on.
Well, hurry up, for heaven's sakes.
And that $60,000 be transferred from free cash and set aside for the pavement and/or improvement of the roads in question in the cemetery.
Hold on. For the improvement of cemetery roads. Is that what you said? Anybody object to this? Alright. So, the, oh, I guess, is there a second? Is anybody object to this thing? No? Okay. Alright, so, your motion to amend has been adopted, so the motion now reads to commit this article to a commission made up of two members of the historical commission, one member of the highway department, two members of the cemetery commission, two at-large members to be appointed by the select board, one member from the conservation commission to report to the selectmen, three months hence and that, $60,000 be transferred from free cash for the improvement of cemetery roads. Okay? That's the motion. Is there any further debate on the motion to commit this thing? Oh, good. Okay. All those in favor of sending this to this commission to let them decide how to spend the $60,000 bucks to repair cemetery roads, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The ayes have it. The motion to commit has been adopted. We look for a favorable report, three months hence. Article 18.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion that the town vote to transfer from free cash $20,000 to bring the water service at the cemetery into compliance along with any incidental costs.
Could you read that again for me, please?
I make a motion that the town vote to transfer from free cash $20,000 to bring the water service at the cemetery into compliance along with any incidental costs.
My apologies. Thank you very much. A motion has been made that the town transfer from free cash $20,000 to bring water service at the cemetery into compliance along with any incidental costs. Is there a second?
Yes.
Is there any debate on the motion?
Not a debate, but just some questions here. What is it $20,000 for? We have a water department and we have a highway department. Why can't we use both of them to get this task accomplished?
Through you, Mr. Moderator. The water department and the highway department are doing this project. That's for materials.
$20,000 for materials? How much piping are we doing down there?
Seventeen hundred feet.
Seventeen hundred feet, Mike says. Okay, thanks.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
The article in the book reads to raise and appropriate, not transfer from free cash? So, I question the reading of the article.
He said all of them.
No, it says raise and appropriate, transfer or borrow.
Transfer. So, transfer or borrow, transfer. This is a transfer from free cash, so it's legitimate. I'm accepting it.
Why are we transferring it from free cash and not raising and appropriating?
Because if we raise and appropriate, it goes on the tax bill and the free cash is money sitting in the bank, so we don't have to raise taxes to do the project.
Anything else? Okay. Alright. Any further debate on the motion to transfer from free cash $20,000 to bring the water service at the cemetery into compliance along with any incidental costs? Is there any further debate? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion has been adopted. Article 18.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, sorry.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash $2,500 to purchase gravel for to be used only on various repairs for private roads that meet the town bylaw requirements.
A motion has been made that the town transfer from free cash the sum of $2,500. The way that I have it written here, it says to purchase the gravel for the purpose of making various repairs for private roads that meet the town bylaws. Is that close enough to the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any debate?
Okay, we get private roads, and in the past, the people that want to improve their private roads, they have to get their own material, and then the highway will spread it. Now, what's changing now? In what private roads are going to get the $2,500? And is this going to go on every year? I mean, what's the change now? We get a change here. And I know people on private roads pay taxes as well as the rest of us, but the way this town has worked in the past is if they want material, they got to pay for it. So, can someone explain that?
Please tell what the bylaw says. The town can do this subject to appropriation. If we don't appropriate the funding for the temporary repairs, and they have to meet all of the specifications that are in the bylaw before the roads can do it, it's first come, first served. Once the gravel's gone, the gravel's gone. But this allows the people on the private roads and the town to have a resource to do those repairs if they meet the bylaw requirement to qualify for it. So, we need to appropriate or they still can't do it. That's what the bylaw says. And that's the only reason I think, yeah.
So, the, excuse me, so the people on private roads, who are they going to see to get there first to get the gravel? I mean, we're going to have a mad rush, and then someone's going to say, oh, I like those people on the road, but I don't like those, so they're not going to get any gravel. And that could happen.
Hold on a second. Was that a question or is that just a comment and that's it?
It's a question.
So, how are you going to distribute the, how's the, how are you going to distribute the gravel?
Okay.
No, I got to get an answer from this. Does anybody have an answer for this?
I'm looking at the bylaw.
Why don't you go ahead? We can say, oh, wait a minute. Nope, we got an answer, sorry.
So, the bylaw reads that the town of Brookfield may, subject to appropriation, make temporary repairs on private ways provided that the private way has been open to public use for a period of six years or more, that there shall be at least three dwellings located along the way. Such repairs shall consist of the filling of holes or depressions in the surface of the pavement, construction of, wait a minute, my eyeballs jumped, sorry. Depressions in the surface of such ways, sand, gravel, cinders, and suitable materials, and shall not include resurfacing or permanent construction of any ways or grading, not more than twice a year, and shall not include construction. No repairs shall be done unless all of others sign an agreement that the town be held harmless from all damages and claims resulting from such repairs. The select board have declared such repairs to be required of public necessity, and the select board shall schedule the repairs based upon the annual appropriation thereof. So, they have to fall into that category. Once all of those are met, whoever gets to the town first with all of those requirements would be the road that would get priority.
Sounds to me like the selectmen are going to make that decision, depending on the applications. That's the way it sounds to me. And your time's up. So, go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, I live on the corner of Cray Bog and Chestnut, and Chestnut's supposedly a private road, but people go down to hunt. There are several, there's streets off of it, there's Four Street off of it. It is so bad that we literally go like this trying to get to houses, and it's ruined cars, and we've been begging someone. The town has come as long as we paid for the materials, but with the rising cost of everything, we can't afford an extra $200, and it only lasts three months, and then it just starts over. And I just want to know, do we fall under that bylaw? And how would we go up, pee in? We need it desperately, more than any road I've ever seen.
So, I think at this point, you probably need to talk to the select board. Once this, once this motion is adopted, go to the select board and talk to them about how you can do that. I don't think this is a thing for a town meeting to be taking up at this point in time. I think it's better for you to talk to the select board once this money is adopted, once this money is appropriated. Okay?
But it seems we fall under the bylaws, right?
I would, I would, you'd have to, you'd have to go to the select board and talk to them on how to go ahead and do that.
Okay, thank you so much.
There you go. Chris Gorman, 32 Pine. Which roads are this for?
The ones that meet the bylaw that I just read. So, I don't know the names of the roads that qualify. They have to have been open for five years. It has to be declared a public necessity. They have to, this is a whole list of...
So, there's a whole list of requirements that need to be satisfied in order for it to get it. So, I don't think they, I don't think they have a list of, well, I don't know, maybe they do have a list of roads, but, you know, you're...
How did this bylaw come about? Or how did this warrant come about?
People complain constantly that they can't get their roads fixed, and I'm trying to help.
Do we have a list of the roads?
So, that's the warrant article's purpose. Do we have a list? No, we do not have a list. They have to meet the bylaw requirements. Once they jump through all of that, that's when we'll start looking at the roads.
Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, there actually is a list. I believe there's nine roads that qualify. I don't, I can't tell you what they are.
Cool.
But I believe that Highway can help.
Thank you.
Any further debate on transferring from free cash $2,500 bucks to purchase gravel for the purpose of making various repairs to private roads that meet town bylaw requirements? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article 20.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash $250,000 to pay off the debt associated with 18 Common Street.
Motion has been made that the town transfer from free cash a sum of up to $250,000 to pay off debt associated with 18 Common Street. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Moderator, to the town accountant, what is the interest rate that we're paying on the debt now?
Treasurer. Treasurer question, I don't...
Okay, well, do we, can we take a stab at what the interest rate would be?
I have no idea. I don't, the accountant doesn't do anything with the debt.
Okay, so, does anybody know what the debt, what the interest rate of the debt is?
Treasurer.
Okay, and the treasurer isn't here?
No, she's not.
That's great. Okay, the reason that I'm asking that, Mr. Moderator, is because the simple fact is that we have a $250,000 debt, probably at an extremely low interest rate that we're paying off right now. If we tie, if we take the money out of free cash, we can't use that free cash somewhere else that we may need down the road where we might have to get a debt at a higher interest rate. So, we should leave the debt the way that it is, but the free cash...
Whoa, whoa, hold on. You're interrupting. I'm sorry. She, no, keep going.
Okay, so, the point is, is that we should leave the free cash sitting there for reasons of keeping the free cash and let the debt ride if the interest rate is at such a low rate at this point, because natural interest rates are above 6%. This could be at 3%. We're actually making money by not paying the debt off.
Are you all about? You still have a lot?
No, they can, they can answer and then...
Okay, so, anyone answer?
With this type of debt, we don't have permanent borrowing, so we don't have that nice free interest rate. Excuse me, we have to roll this every single year, which means we're subject to the new interest rate and closing costs every single year. So, paying this off, we're not subject to that volatile interest rate market, and we don't have to pay the closing costs.
Okay, and you know this why? Because you're not the treasurer. So, tell me why, how do you know this? How do you know this? I mean, I'm asking about the interest rate, and you told, all you sat there and said, we don't know what the interest rate is.
Hold on one second. Hold on one second. And we, she attempted to answer the question, and if I understood the answer correctly, she's basically saying that this has to be done every single year. So, every single year, we have to borrow a new set of money. I believe that's what she's saying, and when we're doing that, we've got to pay closing costs and perhaps a higher interest rate than what we're paying now. I believe that, hold on one second. I believe that was the answer to the question, okay? So, keep going. You got, you got time.
Okay, well, what I'm asking is, is, she couldn't, she couldn't tell us what the interest rate is, but she has that information that she didn't come up with when I asked the original question.
That's, well, you asked for interest rate. Okay, so, your time is up.
Yeah.
That's fine.
So, the town does one-year borrowings on this small of a loan. I don't know what the interest rate is, but I do know that we borrow the money every single year. In terms of using the free cash to pay it off, our free cash expires on June 30th. So, if we don't use it for one-time purchases, it essentially disappears, we have to wait to close the books again, and we get recertified for free cash. So, it becomes unavailable, so it's to be used for purposes like this. We also have other debt out there, so we're trying to reduce the amount of debt we have on our books.
And how much debt do we have?
We have this, and we also have the fire truck that we purchased, which I believe we borrowed $490,000, and we have the remaining borrowing left on the police station, which we had to take out a long-term borrowing on because we maxed out the amount of one-year borrowings we were allowed to do. You're only allowed to do it for 10 years at a time.
Okay, so, your time has expired. If no one else wants to debate, you've got another two minutes, okay? So, I just, you know, want you to know.
Do I have two minutes in the kitty?
You do have two minutes.
Hey, Yakla! Okay, now, I want to go through the town administrator, through the advisory board. Let me make sure my figures are right. Now, this year, you're allocating $2,200 to pay for the 18 Common Street, correct?
$250,000.
Right, but what are we paying out of the budget every year to hold this house? It's $2,200, is that correct? That's what it shows.
We only bought it last year.
Right.
So, I can't answer that question because it would change everything.
Well, I thought I read that we allocated $2,200. What is the figure? That's what I'm asking.
Does anybody know it? We're out there.
Right there in the budget sheet, the FY '23 budget was $6,500 for the principal, and then the interest was $2,260 that you're talking about. So, the total bill, the total bill is, what, $8,760?
Nine thousand bucks.
Yeah.
Now, how much are we spending on the fire truck? The debt that we, what do we make on a payment on that? Is that $23,000 a year?
That's what's indicated on the budget, yeah.
Okay, so, I was just wondering why we can't pay some of the fire truck down and not all of the house?
We can't pay down how many bonds.[1723.12]
You can't do that?
No, because we sold bonds to, to get the permanent.
We don't have, we don't have a bond rating and we cannot pay down a bond. We had to issue bonds to do the permanent borrowing, which we were required to do because we exceeded the number of, of one-year borrowings. We didn't roll this house into it because this would have cost the town more in the permanent borrowing. And since we can pay it off, it takes it off the books and we don't have to worry about coming up with the payments for it annually.
Okay, I just want to make sure this, how you devised the financial and if it was the best, best way to go.
Yeah, the reason we did that was because it would have been more expensive to roll it into the permanent borrowing.
And, uh, one other question is why, why don't we have a treasurer yet?
She went home today.
Okay, she was here?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Any further debate, um, the motion, uh, to transfer two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from free cash to pay off the debt associated with eighteen Common Street? Any further debate? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
The ayes have it, uh, the motion is adopted, um, Article twenty-one. Mr. Moderator, I make the motion to pass over Article twenty-one as no longer necessary. Now, I told you in the instructions, okay? Just tell me you don't have a motion for it and we're good. So we're all done. Article twenty-one, um, is, we're, we're not going to take any action because there's no motion on it, uh, if I understand this correctly. Article twenty-two.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, fifty-thousand dollars to the OPEB liability trust fund account.
Motion has been made to transfer fifty-thousand dollars from free cash to the OPEB liability trust fund account. Is there a second? Uh, there's a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Moderator, to clarify, um, OPEB is the other post-employment, stands for other post-employment benefits, to help the, uh, town understand what we needed it for.
Mr. Holcraft, you have a count, you're okay. Okay, all right. Any debate on the question? Okay, all those in favor of transferring from free cash, fifty-thousand bucks for OPEB liability trust fund account? Oh, pull that microphone good and close and speak good and loud.
I apologize, um, OPEB stands for other post-employment benefits.
Okay? Are we good? Okay. Um, okay, all those in favor of transferring fifty-thousand dollars from free cash to OPEB liability trust fund account, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, uh, the motion is adopted. Article twenty-three, this is a two-thirds vote.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote effective fiscal year 2023 to establish an opioid settlement fund special purpose stabilization fund in accordance with, um, general, um, general law forty, section five B and further authorize the deposit of all opioid settlement fund revenue into the newly established fund.
Motion has been made, uh, that the town establish effective, uh, establish effective twenty, fiscal 2023, an OPEB settlement fund special purpose stabilization fund, uh, in accordance with general law chapter forty, section five B and further to authorize the deposit of all opioid settlement fund revenue into the newly deposited, uh, the newly established fund. Is there a second? Is there any discussion on the debate?
Yeah, you want to explain what that whole, that long line is? What the heck, what is all that? And is there a dollar amount to it or? Okay, that's the next one. I want to-
The attorney general in their infinite wisdom decided that they would challenge all of the, um, medical companies and, and drugstores and get an opioid settlement. The town of Brookfield received a whopping five-thousand dollars plus, like a little over five thousand. We can only spend that money if we have this account and we can only spend it out of that account and our, um, ambulance, fire and police need Narcan. So that's why we're creating it, so that the money has a home.
So if I understand it correctly, the state wants to give us five thousand bucks and we want, we need a place to put it.
Exactly.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, uh, it's a two-thirds vote, um, so hopefully, um, we exceed that in a voice vote, so we don't have to count. Uh, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. We've got the vote. Thank you very much, unanimous. Um, motion is adopted, Article twenty-four.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion that the town vote to appropriate five-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and forty-two cents from the opioid settlement fund special purpose stabilization fund for the purchase of Narcan and/or other opioid treatment expenses.
Motion has been made to transfer five-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and forty-two cents from the opioid settlement fund special purpose stabilization fund for the purpose of Narcan and other opioid treatment expenses. Is there a second? Is there any discussion on the motion?
How, how does this work? I mean, how many Narcans or what is this going to, the police department gets some and the fire department gets some? How many, how many, uh, shots that the, the drug people are doing? How many shots is this five thousand going to do?
Would somebody from the emergency services please answer that question?
Yes, we have a speaker.
Is there somebody's gonna, oh, there it goes, very good.
Hi, Donna LaFleur from, uh, Brookfield Ambulance. Uh, we buy Narcan now, it goes about forty-five dollars for each dose and it only lasts a limited time. Sometimes it's six months, sometimes it's a year, depending on how long the Narcan lasts, that depends on how much we can, we have to buy. We would like the police department to be carrying it too, so that would be a big bonus if the police department started carrying Narcan along with, uh, the ambulance.
Okay, I think that was it. Any further debate on the motion? Okay, again, this is a, uh, this is a two-thirds vote, uh, so hopefully it's unanimous. All those in favor of, uh, appropriating five-thousand-five-hundred-and-eighty-six dollars and forty-two cents from the opioid se- uh, settlement special, settlement fund special purpose stabilization fund, uh, to purchase Narcan and, and/or other opioid treatment, uh, expenses, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
Uh, I heard one no, uh, so I'm going to declare the two-thirds vote, uh, and the motion is adopted. All right, Article twenty-five.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to establish a roof capital special purpose stabilization fund in accordance with general law chapter forty, section five B.
The motion has been made to establish a, a roof capital special purpose stabilization fund in accordance with general law chapter forty, section five B. Is there a second? Is there any debate on the motion to establish a roof capital special purpose stabilization fund?
Not a debate, but a, a question. What, um, building are you referring to on this? Mr. Moder-
I'm sorry, it's not for a specific building, it's for the roofs in town so that we have a, 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 a fund. If we've had two catastrophic roof failures and we're heading for another one in this school, and if we start to fund a special stabilization account, the insurance company is not going to whack us as bad when, if we need to make a claim because we're doing something preventative. So this would go for all the roofs. Currently, we're saving for the school roof though.
Okay, we'll discuss that when that comes up.
Any further debate on the motion?
Yes. Uh, did we not allocate seventy-five thousand last year for this roof?
We did, but we're, we're creating a special, um, a special account to move that into so that we can continue to save for the roof. It's the next article.
Okay, so that's the seventy-five, so we're not adding, we're just-
No, we will be adding as well, there's another article.
Oh.
We need, the, the roof needs roughly six-hundred-thousand dollars worth of work, so we're trying to do it in smaller-
Is there anybody from the school committee that could, uh, could answer the question of where is the, uh, the, uh, what do they call that?
Um, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna allow that. This is really just to establish the fund and, you know, when we get sort of-
I just want to bring up a point. Last year we talked about it, that, uh, the school choice was, the money was supposed to be allocated to maintenance and we found out that it wasn't being allocated for maintenance. Um, so I would like to know where that money's going.
Yeah, uh, I, I don't want to entertain that right now.
Okay, I'll entertain it in a minute.
Thank you. It's not relevant to the question. All right, any further debate, uh, on the, on the motion to establish a roof capital special purpose stabilization fund in accordance with general law chapter forty, section five B? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. All right, it's unanimous vote, the motion is adopted. Article twenty-six.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Move that the town vote to transfer seventy-five thousand dollars from the capital purchase stabilization fund to the newly established roof capital special purpose stabilization fund.
Motion has been made, transfer seventy-thousand, seventy-five thousand dollars from the capital purchase stabilization fund to the newly established roof capital special purpose stabilization fund. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any debate?
Not a debate, just a question. Um, how much is in this capital special account right now?
One-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents.
And, and where's this money coming from, free cash?
The money is, this is the seventy-five we put in last year, so that will come out of this account and go into the roof.
It's going to come from the capital purchase stabilization fund.
Going from one bank account to another.
Sounds like this money's going to be used at the elementary school to me.
That's the next one, kind of.
Okay.
Any further debate? Yeah, I got it. Okay, uh, so, uh, all those, this is a two-thirds vote, uh, so all those in favor of transferring seventy-five thousand dollars from the capital purchase stabilization fund to the roof capital special purpose stabilization fund, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. It's unanimous, the motion is adopted. Article twenty-seven.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion that the town vote to transfer from free cash, seventy-five thousand dollars to newly established roof special purpose capitalization stabilization for the purpose of funding a new roof for the elementary school.
Motion has been made that the town transfer from free cash, the sum of seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, to the roof special purpose capital stabilization fund for the purpose of funding a new roof for the elementary, elementary school. Is there a second? Is there any debate?
Not a debate. What happened to school choice and how much is in school choice right now? School choice was designed to take care of the elementary school. They get big money and now you're coming to the townspeople for the, uh, to put a new top on it. So how much is in school choice and why are you coming after the townspeople for the money?
Asking, the school committee would be the one to ask, answer what's in school choice. However, the town owns this building and we're responsible for its maintenance and this is not going to come to the townspeople, this is free cash, this is not touching the tax rate in any way, shape or form.
Okay, I know the town owns the elementary school, but sometimes, uh, it's, it's like they own the building, so.
Well, we, when I discussed this, with this matter with, with the principal, we were asked to cover half the roof, not the full roof. They had intended at that time, when I originally spoke with her, to pay for half of the roof.
To you, Mr. Moderator, to the advisory board, how much is in free, uh, school choice? You should have that number.
Apparently not. Oh, right here.
Currently, there's six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-nine-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars and fifty-five cents.
Did you get that?
Yep. Does anybody know how much they need, that we need to do the elementary school? Is there a figure on it yet?
You mean that how much of the roof is going to come?
Yeah, yeah.
About six-hundred thousand.
Okay, so you're pretty, they're pretty close right there now.
They do use this consistently every year. They pay for the repairs in this building with the school choice.
Yes, I realize that, okay, all right.
Any further debate? Um, the motion to transfer from seventy-five thousand dollars from free cash for the roof special purpose capital stabilization fund for the purpose of funding a new roof for the elementary school. Any further debate? All those in fa- this is a two-thirds, oh, no, it's not a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no.
No.
Uh, the ayes have it, uh, the motion is adopted, uh, Article twenty-eight.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, five-thousand-five-hundred dollars for a new AccuVote voting machine.
Uh, motion has been made that the town transfer from free cash, five-thousand-five-hundred bucks for a new, uh, AccuVote voting machine. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any debate on the motion to buy a new voting machine? All those in favor of transferring five, fifty-five-hundred bucks for a new voting machine, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Uh, the motion is adopted, um, Article, the ayes have it, motion is adopted, Article twenty-nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from free cash, a sum of nine-thousand dollars or up to nine-thousand dollars for a new server for the police station.
Motion has been made that the town raise and appropriate up to nine, I'm sorry, transfer, I'm sorry. Hang on. Uh, okay. That the town transfer up to nine-thousand dollars for a new server for the police station. Is there a second?
Second.
Any debate? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. Uh, Article thirty.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion that the town vote to create an assistant library director position to be added to the town's classification plan as grade five and to raise and appropriate a sum of forty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars on this new position.
Okay. Our bylaw is required that if a motion can be, uh, divided, that it be divided, uh, which means, and what I'm saying is, there's actually two motions here. Uh, one that they create the assistant library director position and the other is to allocate forty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars to that position. Okay, so we're going to take those two questions up separately, okay? So, uh, the motion that we have at the moment is that the town, uh, create an assistant library director position to be added to the town's classification, classification plan as grade five. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any debate?
We haven't had a, um, assistant library director in all these years. Now why all of a sudden we want to, uh, get a library assistant director? What's, what's, what's up with that? What's going on now?
Can somebody answer his question?
And I don't think it's needed, but someone can, uh, explain that to me.
Uh, uh, does the library director want to?
Brenda Metville, library director. This is a position we've been looking at for several years, more. It's not, um, something that has happened in the surrounding towns, but it's something that really should. This town supports this public library like no other town in this area. So therefore we are far busier than these other libraries and we have statistics and numbers that show that we do serve the non-resident population. So with the talents that we need and the resources we need to use that other public libraries are not using, um, we do the work for them. So I'm not the only one that is trained to provide books from out of state, um, from other libraries, from Comcast, from Boston. So we have, so with all these other responsibilities, and when I'm not here, I mean, I'm over twenty years now, I'm gone for five weeks. I need somebody to cover paying bills when I'm not there, um, somebody to have a little more authority than a library assistant. So that's why we created this position.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Holcraft, you got about thirty seconds or twenty seconds? Do you want, do you want anything more?
I calculated I got forty-two seconds. I, I still don't, uh-
Twenty seconds, wow.
Oh, okay. Okay, she answered my question, but I still don't think it's needed.
Any further debate, um, the motion to create, uh, an assistant library director position and add it to the town's classification, classification plan as grade five? Any further debate on that motion?
Mr. Moderator, I, I guess the question, I have a couple of different questions. Number one, how many hours is the library open? Number two, um, how, how many, how many weeks does she take off at a time? That you would need somebody to be there to pay the bills and to do some of the other things. I mean, if you take a week off from work, you're not going to need to pay the bills for one week, you would be back there a week later to pay the bills and such. So I'm not understanding why we need an assistant librarian director at forty-two thousand and not an assistant librarian, but not the director position for a lot less salary than what they're proposing.
All right, so, um, how many hours are you open? Twenty-nine hours a week plus is the number of hours that are open. Uh, and I'm, uh, so there's a question, I think she asked about, um, you know, vacation. I'm uncomfortable with this question, uh, because I think it's delving into an employee's stuff and I'm a- and I'm a little uncomfortable with it.
Yes.
But you understand the question. I, I do appreciate the question. Um, but, uh, do you wanna address that at all? Do you understand what the question is?
But when I take a vacation...
She's questioning if you take a week off, you know, then next the week you come back and take care of the bills and things like that, and, so...
So, I've been, I've been doing that. Um, but I also need a leader in my place when I'm not there.
Okay. Okay. So, she needs a leader in the place if she's not there. I'm sorry, she's not done yet. She's got about fifteen seconds.
Okay, then, um, uh, the thing of it is, is that you, she implied that she's taking five weeks off. She's not taking five weeks straight off. So, she's only taking a week or two weeks off at a time. Like the rest of us in this world, you have to prepare when you're leaving to go on vacation and prepare when you come back.
Okay.
So, I don't understand why you needed an assistant director to do that.
Fair enough. Time.
Move the question.
Really, that, yeah, really.
Um, um, so, did you wanna say something?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not gonna accept that because she, she came up to the microphone and, go ahead.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I just wanna say that, um, I mean, I obviously support this. I'm one of the library trustees, um, and I support a lot of what Brenda does. Um, there's a lot of behind the scenes that go, that go on, um, that she is in support of our, and she does, certainly does not get paid for all of the time that she commits to our community. And this includes a lot of things. It includes the things that she's brought in as far as building community, um, by way of, we allow people to do free, um, faxes and copying for free for the community. All of her knowledge that she has, we could not, as library trustees, we could not replace that right now. However, um, the current, what comes with this assistant position, she's very knowledgeable. Um, she clearly doesn't have as many years as Brenda, but our hope is that she can start helping with the process so that when Brenda's ready to leave us, we're not stuck with nobody as library trustees. Because that's probably gonna cost us a lot more as a town, bringing in somebody new that is new to the town, that has less knowledge. Um, so, and there's one other thing, and I'm sure I'm close to out of time here.
You have thirty seconds.
So, um, the other thing I was gonna say is that, um, the library is also, it has a security system. And we get notified as the library trustees, a couple of us, but Brenda also get no, gets notified. She comes on her off-hours if I can't make it to the library to unlock it and unlock the, and do the code. So, that's another big thing, too. There's a lot of things that she does that are not accounted for here, so...
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Any further debate on the motion to create, uh, an assistant library position uh, to be added to the town's classification plan as grade five?
I had a question.
Yeah. Come to the microphone and speak clearly.
My name is John Washburn, called Maple Street.
Yeah.
Uh, how many employees, employees do you have? That's what I'm questioning, that working.
How many, he's, he's asking how many employees the library has? Six part-time employees.
Okay. And none of them are...
Could you come to the microphone and, yeah, give away that...
None of them can fill in for you, is that what you're saying? You need somebody full-time in order to fill in for you?
But I'm saying the other employees can do...
Okay, you're gonna have to come, I'm sorry, you're gonna have to come to the microphone and...
We're just looking at what's best for the community and how to serve.
Let's answer your question. Any further?
My, my thing is, is you already have somebody available that can fill in for you for this, this time.
Okay, so I don't want a discussion going on between the two of you. I just don't want that to happen. If you wanna oppose it, oppose it, that, you know, make all those statements that you wanna make, that's fine, but I'm, I don't wanna have a, a conversation between the two of you. All right, thank you. All right.
Mr. Moderator, please move the question.
A motion has been made to move the question. Is there any objection to moving the question, closing debate? There's no objection, so we're gonna vote on the motion, uh, to create an assistant library director position to be added to the town's classification plan as grade five. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no?
No.
The ayes have it. Uh, that portion of article thirty has been adopted. Uh, now we need to have, all right, I'm sorry, now we have a motion before us that the town raise and appropriate forty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight bucks uh, to fund, uh, this new position. Um, so, um, is there any debate on, uh, raising and appropriating forty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars for this position?
No debate, just a couple of questions here. How many hours, uh, is this person gonna be working? And are we gonna have her working at the same time Brenda's working?
Uh, can somebody answer the question? Number of hours and are there gonna be hours concurrent with the current library director? I think it's...
Correct. Thank you.
Uh, do we have...
So, the question is about us working together?
No, but there's two questions. One is, how many hours are associated with this forty-two thousand, uh, six hundred and eighty-eight dollar salary?
Uh, it's between twenty-nine and thirty-two. We haven't ironed it out yet, but that's the amount.
Twenty-nine and thirty-two hours, somewhere in the middle there, they're still working that out. And then the ex, the next question is, will they be concurrent? I mean, are you gonna be there at the same time? I think that's the question.
Yes. Now, my hours can stagger and I can be there during closed hours and get more work done. Um, we're working, you know, with the three-fifties. We have all these projects going on. We have field trips going on right now. Doing everything while we're open and busy is not conducive to, uh, being successful in what we wanna accomplish.
Is that any, those are the questions you all said? Okay. Um, is there any further debate on, um, raising and appropriate forty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight bucks to fund the, the assistant library director position? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no?
No.
The ayes have it. There's forty-two thousand six hundred and eighty-eight bucks for the assistant director library position. Article number, uh, thirty-one.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to create an assistant treasurer slash collector position to be added to the town's classification plan at grade five.
Motion has been made, uh, that the town create an assistant treasurer, collector, position to be added to the town's classification plan at grade five. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. Any debate? Or questions?
Now, town is getting bigger and bigger tonight. I don't know, your tax bills are gonna be going way up. How many hours is this person gonna be working and, uh, uh, when? And what's the pay?
There is no pay because we need to create a position. It was not intended to fund this position yet. I'm looking at trying to regionalize this position so it has the least monetary impact possible on the town.
How many hours do you know yet?
We don't know. We need to develop the job description, but I didn't wanna go through all of that effort if it wasn't going to be created.
I think the townspeople need to know how many hours.
Well, this is step one. So, if it's created, then we'll go in and look at the hours and what the job description is. I'll see if I can regionalize the position and share it with other people so that they're not here and when they're not a full-time employee for us. And then, and then we'll, we'll come back next year and fund it. And if people don't like it, then we don't fund it.
All right, thank you.
Uh, any further debate on creating, uh, an assistant treasurer, collector position to be added to town's classification plan at grade five? Any further debate? Uh, all those in favor of creating this position, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no?
No.
The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article, uh, thirty-one. Thirty-two. Thirty-two. I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to delete in its entirety the following section of the general bylaws. Chapter eleven, chapter two, sorry. Chapter two, town meeting section nineteen or take any action relative thereto.
Uh, a motion has been made, uh, to delete section nineteen of chapter two, uh, in its entirety, from the general bylaws. Is there a second to the motion? Uh, is there any, is there any, is there any, there's been a second. Uh, is there any debate? Moderator's got a question. This is chapter nineteen, oh, I'm sorry.
So, this is removing the citizen's petition, um, bylaw. Is that correct?
What it's doing is removing a carbon copy of the state law. So the citizen's petition under this general law has to be followed regardless of whether or not there's a bylaw. However, if the state decides to change the law, the way this stands, ours will be in conflict. So if we take this out, we still have to follow the law. We still have to do all the same exact things for a citizen's petition. It does not change anybody's right to have a citizen's petition. All it does is it removes the extra link that...
Thank you.
Any further debate on the motion to delete from the general bylaws, section nineteen of chapter two? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no?
No.
Uh, the ayes have it. Uh, the motion is adopted. Uh, section nineteen is, uh, deleted. Uh, all right, article thirty-three, sorry.
Mr. Moderator, I make a motion that the town vote to amend the general bylaws, chapter four, advisory committee, section one, as follows, by striking the following language and inserting in place thereof the language involved in warrant article thirty-three as it appears.
A motion has been made to amend the general bylaws, chapter four, advisory committee, section one, uh, by striking the word at number seven and inserting the word at number five. Is there a second? All right. Is there any debate?
Just wanna explain, could you explain that in simple terms? What do you guys, just wanna have a three, four quorum or instead of five?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, we have vigorously tried to maintain a level of nine volunteers on the advisory committee.
Nine or seven?
No, I'm, I'm trying to give the history behind it. Nine advisory members, um, for a number of years. When I joined the board, it was nine, then it went to seven because we had a lack of volunteers. Now we're down to four, so if we can bring it down to five, um, we have a different quorum situation and this possibility that someone in the good of their hearts for their time will volunteer. And, um, we definitely need more volunteers in this community. And that is why we're, we're decreasing it. We could still do an effective job with five, uh, rather than having two vacancies, basically.
So what do you have now, seven?
We have it, we have it, but we have four people.
So you gotta bring it down to five to get a quorum then?
Right.
So if you have three people, you can still have a quorum.
Yeah.
Okay, now you can't do that because it's set seven, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Any further debate on the motion to reduce the number of members of the advisory committee from seven to five? All those in favor of doing so, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? The motion is adopted. Uh, article number thirty-four.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the general bylaws by adding the following. Chapter one, section seven. A quorum of any board or committee, whether elected or appointed, of the town of Brookfield shall consist of a majority of the sitting members unless otherwise governed by Massachusetts general law.
A motion has been made that the town amend the general bylaws by adding the following. Chapter one, section seven. A quorum of any board or committee, whether elected or appointed, of the town of Brookfield shall consist of a majority of, uh, I'm gonna strike sitting because I think that's silly, members unless otherwise governed by Massachusetts general law. Why? What happens if they're standing? I'm totally serious.
The members that are not seated, you have a board of seven and you don't pass seven, then you have seven members, that's the form you need the seven board. If the city member...
I'll leave it in. It's sitting. I disagree, but we'll go for it. Is there a second to the motion?
I have a second.
Second.
Is there any further debate? All those in favor of, um, this, this, this motion, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? Motion is adopted. Uh, article thirty-five.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to amend chapter fifteen, section fourteen, vacations with pay of the personnel bylaws by striking the language crossed out and replacing therewith the bold language immediately following as presented in the warrant book, article thirty-five.
Motion has been made that the town amend chapter fifteen, section fourteen, vacations with pay of the personnel bylaws by striking the language crossed out and replacing therewith the bold language immediately following as presented in warrant article thirty-five. Is there a second? Is there any debate? All those in favor, uh, of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say no? Oh. Oh, there's a question.
So, right now, has the bylaw...
Yeah, no, I totally get it.
Um, as the bylaw sits right now, they have to be an employee of the town for one year before they get vacation time?
Yes.
And this bylaw would eliminate that? So somebody who comes in and works two months gets a vacation? Three months? Okay. All right. Mr. Moderator, I make a motion to pass this article over.
Uh, that's a motion to postpone indefinitely, which would...
Postpone indefinitely.
There we go. Thank you very much. There's a motion to postpone this indefinitely, which if it passes, will kill the motion and will go on to the next article. Is there a second to the motion? There's a second. Okay, you can debate.
Okay. Um, I, I think that there, there is some type of, people have to serve their due time. And by giving someone a vacation in three months, five months down the road, they could leave the employment. We've paid them for vacation time. So we've paid them time to take off when they barely got an hour of their, their, um, probation period. And, and I don't think that that's correct. I think that the bylaw should sit as it is where they have to work one full year. Most companies, and maybe we're not a company, but we do have personnel laws and that should, we, we should go with the same type of laws that other comp, that companies are using as their benefit package. Why would we give someone a vacation in three months? I understand they can accumulate sick time and they can earn it over a period of time, but to give a person vacation time after a ninety-day period is wrong. They, they need to serve their, their, their due diligence by working and showing us that they can work for the town and not just come in, work a little bit, and take some time off. I wish I could do that.
Any further?
I don't think so.
Okay. Any further debate on the motion to, um, postpone indefinitely? Which would kill this thing. There is some debate.
I just think that with the employment situation being what it is right now and unemployment being so low, some positions being open, that we need to be competitive. And the rest of the world, you start a new job, you get two weeks vacation in the first year, period. It's not, you have, you, you can't take it until you've been there or here. That's not the way the world works right now, so I would, I'm not sure what that means as far as the motion goes, but that's my opinion about the article.
You're supporting the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, you're, you're opposing the mo, I'm sorry, yes.
I'm not supporting the motion, I'm supporting the article.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize. It's the motion to postpone indefinitely. She opposes the motion to postpone indefinitely. Thank you. Okay. Any further debate on the motion to postpone indefinitely, which would kill this? Okay? All right. So all those in favor of postponing this indefinitely, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed to postponing this indefinitely and killing the motion, say no?
No.
Uh, the noes have it. We're back to the main motion, uh, which is to amend chapter fifteen, section fourteen, vacations with pay of the personnel bylaws by striking the language crossed out and replacing therewith... therewith the bold language immediately following as presented in the warrant article thirty-five. Is there any further debate on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Uh, the ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article thirty-six. Is that you?
Sorry, I...
Uh, hang on one moment. I would like to move that we address articles thirty-seven and thirty-eight out of order, please.
Oh, yeah.
There is a motion, uh, to take articles thirty-seven and thirty-eight, uh, out of order. Uh, so those are, uh, initiative petitions, uh, that are designed to, uh, make town clerk and the, um, tax collector, uh, appointed positions. I got that correct, right? Yeah, okay, okay. Uh, so the motion is to take these up, out of order, take them up right now, okay? Does everybody understand what the motion is? Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
There's a second to the motion. Okay. Uh, all those in favor of taking these out of order, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Uh, sorry, I got to have a count.
If we do that, we have these people...
I say no. I did not attend six months of meetings. And do ten hours of minutes a week.
All asleep at the wheel there, terribly sorry. All those in favor of the motion to take these out of order, please stand. You eyes are really tired, because man, if you, if you guys said it loud enough, I would have called it. Sorry about that, but we got to count them.
And I definitely got to have at least a half an hour to debate.
Thirty-six.
All right, you may be seated, all those opposed, please stand. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm going to call this, I'm sorry. Please be seated. Uh, we're going to take the motions out of order. Uh, so we now have, um, uh, citizen, I'm calling it citizen petition one, it's not labeled in your, uh, warrant. Uh, I believe Mr. Taff is going to make a motion relative to this.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
I move that the town vote to change the Brookfield, uh, town clerk position from an elected official to an appointed official under the general law, chapter forty-one, uh, section one B.
Okay, a motion is made to make the town clerk an appointed position. Is there a second to the motion?
Yeah.
Okay, there's a second to debate.
So the reason for bringing this up is that we have only two, uh, elected officials, full-time elected officials in town. Um, and by, by being an elected official, you have to have a residency in town. When you, and you have a couple of very important positions, your population in town is what, forty-three hundred and thirteen hundred as seniors, so your pool of potential candidates is very little. When you have an appointed position, it removes the, um, residency requirement, also gives the employee the opportunity to get in that position and stay there for as long as they want without having to run for that position every three years. And if they decide to move or relocate, they could move out of town and still maintain their position. It really is a benefit to the town and to the employees. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further debate on the motion? Um, the gentleman down back started walking before anybody else raised their hand, so...
God, okay, uh, twenty-seven, we were wrote, I for the life of me can't figure out why you people want to keep giving away your rights to elect people. I just can't figure that out. I don't understand, I understand what you're doing, but I don't understand why you want to give up your rights. We don't have many rights left in this state at all. And if you give up your right to elect people in this town, that's just one more snowball that goes down towards Boston and you lose your rights. That's all I have to say.
I got two minutes on the clock?
Two minutes on the clock.
No, that's enough. Don Taff, question. How many, uh, elected town clerks are there in the state? As far as I know, most of them are elected, but not all. What's the number? I can't give you a number, Dave, but I know that it is more, more that are elected than are, um, appointed.
That's it?
That's it?
That's it? Yeah?
Um, I'm opposed to this amendment for the following reasons. When I go to cast my ballot every year to vote, I get to choose who I want. Mike Searay's the pleasure of me and the rest of us in this room. If I'm not happy with Mike, I can vote for somebody else to throw on the ballot. If I'm not happy with an appointment, I have to vote against Brad, get him out first, puts a layer, you know, to, to, you're going to appoint someone, it makes my vote less, I feel. So I think we should leave it alone, that one person, one vote, we don't like the person, we vote him out. And I have to have another hurdle to go on over.
Thank you.
Uh, Linda Lincoln, um, I am against, um, an appointed town clerk. Uh, the town has been very fortunate the past thirty-five years of having two people who have a love for the town of Brookfield, myself and including Mike Searay. Uh, we were both drawn and brought up here in this community and we care about the community and the people in this community. You appoint somebody to this position and they're just going to, they're coming in for the money. They're not going to care about the people in this town. You can come, we know, we know the history of the town, we know the people of the community. And it's, and if somebody came into your office and wanted to know, for an example, where did Mary Smith's grandmother live? We know where these people are. You get an appointed person, they don't care about the, the people in the community, they just care about doing their job. And, and they just want to make the money. That is all that they're interested in, becoming appointed. And I feel that this position should be an elected position because, uh, you're very fortunate to have the person that you have here. Thanks.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak in favor of this motion? In favor of it? Okay, go ahead.
Having a resident as an employee is a benefit to the town. However, we do have a tremendous number of employees that are non-residents and they truly care about this town. And you get, uh, a much broader spectrum of people with an appointed position rather than an elected position.
Chris Gorman, thirty-two Pine, I'd like to bring up the fact that if, uh, we do have an appointed official, it's almost impossible to remove them from their job without violations and/or, um, write-ups. Um, once you're an elected, an elected official, every three years, Mr. Searay has to vote, has to run, has to put his name on the ballot, he has to do his job and prove to us that he does his job. He does that job. If we appoint somebody, you're going to just be stuck for the next thirty years with whoever's been in. And, uh, then you'll really be regretful to this decision.
Any further? Yep.
Doris Matthews, forty-six West Main, um, as a citizen of Brookfield, I am not in favor of taking away a citizen's right to choose the candidate of their choice. There is no guarantee that the candidate pool will broaden. That is an assumption. I am not in favor of this whatsoever. Thanks.
Okay. Any further debate?
Gary Lake of Claybuck Street, you just can't come in off the street...
Get right close, Gary.
You just can't come in off the street and, uh, take over the town clerk's job. It's not, it's not possible, it's too complicated. You have to have some experience. Mike Searay, uh, understudied my wife when she was a town clerk for twenty years or something. And, uh, and so he knew what he was doing. You just can't come off the street and take over the town clerk's job.
Okay. Any further debate? All right. Uh, there's no further debate. All those in favor, uh, of making town clerk an appointed position, uh, according to, uh, the general law cited, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
The noes have it. The motion is defeated. Uh, article thirty-eight, uh, Mr. Taff. I'm calling it article thirty-eight, it's, uh, that's what I call it.
I would rather motion.
Uh, the motion has been, well, okay, okay. Okay, motion been withdrawn. So now we're back to, where are we back to? Article thirty-six, I believe, or thirty-five. Thirty-six, thank you. All right.
Mr. Moderator, driven article one, uh, one thirty Long Hill Road, Chair of the Brookfield Planning Board. This article is sponsored by the Brookfield Planning Board. Uh, we want to, uh, have the town vote to amend zoning bylaws, section eight G, medical adult-use marijuana facilities, and section four D six, use regulation table, according to the, uh, strikeout in bold, uh, insertions as they appear in the, uh, in the warrant book.
All right. There's a motion that's been made, uh, that the town amend zoning bylaws, section eight G, uh, medical slash adult-use marijuana facilities, and section four D six, use regulation table as presented in warrant article thirty-six. So, uh, before you get going, let's hear the report from the, uh, planning board. I guess it's a report and recommendation.
All right, so in the front of the warrant article book, you'll find the Brookfield Planning Board report on the town marijuana zoning bylaw amendments.
Voter. Can you speak, Dr. Phil?
Sure. So, uh, at a public hearing on Wednesday, April five, twenty-twenty-three, at which a quorum was present, the Brookfield Planning Board reviewed and voted, it says five to zero, but it's actually, uh, uh, four in favor and one no vote, to support the following amendments to the town's current adult recreation marijuana bylaw. And the summary and rationale for those amendments are below. Would you like me to read what's written here or can we...
We're good.
Very good.
Okay. Okay. So if you would like to, um, defend the motion to adopt this thing, uh, you're, you're more than happy to do that, you have two minutes. When you ready?
All right, so, Mr. Moderator, we're proposing these changes because we feel that the current marijuana zoning bylaw, as it's written, uh, is inadequate to protect the town in the event that, uh, someone wants to, uh, establish a marijuana business here, uh, and feels that they're, uh, inordinately constrained by the areas in which the current law allows this to happen. On the map that's displayed behind the advisory table there next to the flag, you see two, uh, orange areas. Those are, uh, the areas designated by the current bylaw as the marijuana overlay district. Uh, that is the only place currently in which, uh, marijuana businesses can be located. At present, one of those areas, the eastern one, uh, is entirely covered with other businesses. And to the west, all of the lots are currently, uh, occupied, not for sale or, uh, not available otherwise. If someone wanted to come in to town to, uh, establish some sort of marijuana business, uh, and found that we actually had a, uh, a defective, uh, ban by, uh, delegating it to those two areas, they could initiate litigation, which, uh, which might, uh, allow them to locate their business anywhere at all in the town. So that's the primary purpose. The other thing is that...
You don't have much time left.
Okay, since the last time we, uh, amended this bylaw, the, uh, businesses changed and now hope and, uh, hope and air growing is also available. This is something that a number of citizens have expressed an interest in, so we're trying to accommodate that.
Your time's up.
Okay.
All right. Any further debate, uh, on the motion to amend the bylaws according to, uh, what's printed in the warrant book, article thirty-six?
I got two minutes?
You got two minutes.
Make sure I have them.
You got them.
Uh, first of all, I was on the plan...
You're all set.
Yeah, two minutes, two seconds.
Oh, it is.
Um, on the planning board, just is in the warrant book, it says a five, five to zero. It was four, 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 and one against. Um, I want to correct that up, I want to correct that. Four, four, the marijuana laws and one against.
I think you made that correction.
I'm making that correction again.
Good.
Um, I want to straighten something out here. You all like my, you all like my...
This is about marijuana. This is about marijuana.
No, I want you to address me. I don't want you to turn to the audience, I want you to turn and talk to me. Thank you.
All right, I'll face you. I don't want to be...
I'm sorry, I know, it's horrible, but...
Um, as you know, in this town, we got bylaws on signs, okay? And my sign is always being attacked. Um, and other sign, bylaws on other signs are grossly violated and they don't pick, they don't do anything to them, but they pick up on mine. Um, as my sign says, all zones for the marijuana, as your sign says. But, the zoning bylaw states you can only have such a big sign, it can only be so big. So when I said on that sign, all zones, all zones that are going to be in the warrant book that we are voting on, not all zones in the town, it's the zones that we are voting on tonight in the warrant book. So you people have put this garbage out, okay? And the sign is correct, you should be ashamed of yourself. So that's the way it is, okay? Thank you very much. Okay, enjoy the yellow sign.
Any further, any further debate?
Mr. Moderator, I'm in favor of this amendment for the following reasons. We have a marijuana bylaw, it exists, and it's in those two red zones. And what we have right now in that red zone is saying that if I have property in that red zone, I can open up a facility and I have to be fifteen feet from my neighbor. I think that's about from me to you, fifteen feet. I can grow, I can manufacture, I can retail, I can do all that, fifteen feet from your house. You can look out the window, you can see my whole operation. That is not fair to our neighbors that are in that zone. That's what's going to get us to the AG's office and get struck down. It's not right, they can follow suit. This is, this is basically almost a virtual ban that could get us to, to get to the AG's office. If it gets to that point, we will have no bylaw. And then a judge will decide where, what goes where. And we don't want that. We have the opportunity to have control over this, and we should take that opportunity. The planning board has worked ridiculously on this for the last year and a half, just on this recent amendment, plus all the time they did previously when Sharon was on there and went over everything. This bylaw is more restrictive than what we have now. Everything is by special permit. This is special permit, this is, there's so many layers to get to. And again, this is just for the opportunity to ask for permission. That's all it is, if, if this passes. If we don't pass this, that means that our, we're telling our neighbors in that zone, ha, too bad for you, it's fifteen feet from your house. And there's nothing that anybody can do because that's our current bylaw. And that's not fair. We've got to do the right thing for all of our neighbors. This, what new bylaw says you can grow with a two-hundred-foot setback, two-hundred feet from all property zones, all property line, every single property line. That makes you, your acreage at least ten to fifteen acres, okay? Let's put it not on Route nine, let's put it where it belongs, out of sight, with setbacks that are fair for all of our neighbors. We have to do this. If we don't, then it's going to be ordered from us, from a third party. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Any further debate? Any further debate?
Maury Mepak from Rice Corner Road, I have a question around the rationale for outdoor cultivation, given the terpenes or the essential oils from marijuana plants can travel up to a mile. Two-hundred feet's not really enough to stop that. So I'd like to hear from someone on the planning board, offering the rationale.
So you want rationale, put setbacks, is that what you're saying?
Rationale for allowing outdoor cultivation.
Oh, okay, okay.
Well, outdoor cultivation is now allowed by Massachusetts general law, and it's regulated by the Kansas Control Commission. The two-hundred-foot setbacks from property lines were part of the solution to the issue that is raised about the orders from the, from the plants, and that only larger plots of greater than ten acres would be viable for, or have enough area to actually make cultivation worthwhile. Secondly, the, the orders are only produced by the plants during a few weeks at a time. So during the growing season, which is relatively short, here at these latitudes, it would be a few weeks, and I, I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly how many, but it was like maybe around four. So that's the rationale for that.
Okay. You still have about twenty, twenty seconds.
It's my understanding that that's when it's strongest, when the flower's budding, but they still stink from the essential oils, so.
Any further debate?
Press former Brookfield Planning Board, I voted in favor for this, mostly due to the fact that the original bylaw is, is not conducive to our town. It's very, almost illegal to the way it's set right now. It definitely opens up the town for, for problems. If somebody wanted to go to the state and possibly bring us to court, it would definitely fail. That was the reason we took a year and a half to go over this, to get all the, everything you see here, all the additions, all the deletions, and special permit is required for all outdoor grows, all indoor grows, all grows, all pot stores, everything is required with a special permit. So that still gives the planning board carte blanche to, to, to guide the grow-up or the store in some way. This doesn't just allow a store to come in, doesn't allow a shop, a shop to come in. It definitely gives us still guidance, which the other one really does not give us, it's, it's leaving us open. It's definitely a good, a good bill that we put together, we had multiple people there. We had multiple public hearings, there was maybe ten people that showed up and gave their inputs, we definitely worked with them and their concerns, and it's a, it's a good bylaw for us to, to work with, and, and it gives us, it gives us ultimate say at the end of the day, and that's, that's what this bylaw is for.
Sharon Mahoney, former chair of the planning board. I participated intensely in the development of this bylaw. I want to stress two things. Odor control was brought up, it is in the restrictions under section eight. Cultivation and product manufacturing facilities shall install odor control technology and regularly maintain such equipment in working quarter. The planning board, to broaden this point, under this bylaw, would have control of such conditions. Under this bylaw, planning board can only control where these facilities would go. This bylaw would allow specific control under the special permit process for such things as odor, appropriateness of location, appropriateness of the buildings, the, which districts these go in. If you look at the use regulation table on section four, there's only several sections where cultivation is even allowed, and there are setbacks involved. So this actually gives the town more control rather than less. And to the point there, the reason that that left-hand side, the westernmost side of the overlay district is so small, is because a school opened up. And Massachusetts general law recommends that there's a buffer zone around schools. So that section is even smaller than it used to be, rendering us more liable to be, to be litigated against by a potential businessperson who wants to establish a district. If this may, if this stays, we might be open to that type of litigation. This gives the town more control, it's another layer of control of the land use, in addition to the other requirements, including host community agreement, security, background checks, public carings. This is the only one where a butters would have a say at a meeting, and those, those concerns would be recorded as a matter of record going into the planning board's decision to grant a special permit.
Your, your time is up.
Thank you.
Any further debate? Okay. All those in favor of amending the zoning bylaw section eight G medical slash adult use marijuana facilities and section four D six, use regulation table, as presented in the warrant article thirty-six, this is going to require a two-thirds vote, just need to announce that. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Sounds like two-thirds to me. The motion is adopted. Okay, so now, we've already done the two initiative, two citizens petitions, now we have a, a non-binding flag and seal citizen's petition. Do we have someone to make a motion? You can watch, please.
Mr. Moderator, I move that Brookfield approve the non-binding resolution to change the flag and seal of Massachusetts as printed in the warrant.
Okay, motion has been made to make a non-binding resolution recommending that our representatives, if I understand the, the, the warrant correctly, in support of the report of the commission for the new flag and seal. Right, am I about to do it? As written, as written in the warrant.
Yeah, almost. We're not advising our representatives to vote on anything, because the commission's already established, so it's more to move it ahead with the support of the town.
Okay.
Thanks.
Do you want to, go ahead. I was there a second. I heard a second, so go.
Okay, my name's Sherry Zitter, I live at one forty-nine Lake Road, and thanks to everyone for hanging in for these last two votes. I love living in Brookfield and in Massachusetts, I love our spunkiness that sparked the American Revolution, and I'm really sad about how we treated the original occupants here. We can't change history, but we can make one small step towards better relations by supporting a change in the state seal and flag. And Jeff, would you mind just pulling out the flag so people can see what it looks like right now? The current flag has a settler's arm with a sword raised above the head of an Indian, and the motto in Latin says, "By the sword we seek peace." The image of the Indian is not historically accurate, it was modeled after a native person from the West rather than New England, and the broadsword is modeled after one used by Miles Standish to behead Native people. Not a great image for our young children to study in school. Massachusetts has changed our state flag several times over the years, and this change in the flag has bipartisan support and a bipartisan commission that's already been funded by our Republican-less governor with indigenous representation. So now, for the first time in a hundred and forty years, we're really undertaking a serious review of our symbols, and all of us are invited to give input over the coming months. The cost of the change will be minimal. In twenty-seventeen, a lot of us gathered at the Togan Beach Campgrounds to honor the artifacts unearthed there and to preserve the native burial grounds. A yes vote here continues our local tradition of honoring our indigenous friends and neighbors. So seventy-five towns in Massachusetts have supported this positive change so far, some of them unanimously, so let's join them tonight by voting yes. Thanks.
All right, any further debate? All right, all those in favor of the non-binding resolution associated with the flag and seal, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
I need to count. All those in favor, please stand, and constables. Forty-one. Okay, please be seated. All those that are opposed, please stand. Six. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. So the total was sixty-two yas, thirty-six no. The ayes have it, motion adopted. All right. Final motion is a, or the final article is a citizen's petition with regard to a motion that's going to be made. Start. Okay, so Marty, please get right up to that microphone, speak good and loud.
Marty Vanish from Brookfield. I move that the town raise and appropriate a sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to fund, file, and prosecute an appeal to the Worcester Superior Court of the decision of the District Court, case number one eight six nine C V zero zero two five seven, relative to enforcing the cease and desist order of the zoning enforcement officer of the town and the zoning bylaws and decisions of the zoning board of appeals against Daniel Ford individually and his manager of DP twenty-three Bulldogs LLC for the property located at five Quabog Street, Brookfield, Massachusetts.
A motion has been made that the town raise and appropriate a sum of twenty-five thousand dollars to fund, file, and prosecute an appeal to the Superior Court of the decision of the District Court, case number one eight six nine C V zero 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 two five seven, relative to enforcing the cease and desist order of the zoning enforcement officer of the town and the zoning bylaws and decisions of the zoning board of appeals against Daniel Ford individually and as manager of DP twenty-three Bulldogs LLC for the property located at five Quabog Street, Brookfield, Massachusetts. Is there a second to the motion? There is a second to the motion. You may debate, you have two minutes.
There are two issues that make this petition necessary. Number one is the noise, seven days a week, eight hours a day. This has affected the quality for many longtime residents of Brookfield. One has already sold their home on South Maple Street because of the noise. Many senior citizens in the most affected areas do not have the option to move and are forced to endure the constant noise. The other issue is the enforcement of the town's zoning laws. The owner has personally cost the town an excessive amount of money with appeals in East Brookfield District Court, but the law-
So I, I told you about your comments, so-
I'm sent for these comments.
Yeah, and I told you that I was going to call these out of order, because you're, you're going after the owner and his motivations and such, and I will not allow you to do that.
I thought you approved it.
I did not.
Okay, my misunderstanding. Okay. Oh, so how do I word this? There is intention to open a dealership at that location.
Again, that has really nothing to do with this, as I understand it. So I, so I guess the question that I, my email to you said, you need to be the demonstrator, you need to explain why this isn't, why the town needs to spend twenty-five thousand dollars on this.
These, these are the issues, the reasons why the town needs to spend it.
One moment, okay. So here, here's an issue.
The owner is required to get a special permit for the track due to the expansion of operation far beyond the Grand Farm-
Yeah, I'm going to hold you right there. I'm going to let you go a little bit further, but I'm very concerned about being remarked.
That's, so, I'll just finish. In conclusion, it is important that the town support the zoning enforcement officer and the zoning board of appeals, for this will set a precedent that lets others violate the careful planning that keeps Brookfield the desired, desirable community that we enjoy. Dedicating this funding to the prosecution of this matter in Worcester Superior Court will ensure that money is available if needed. The town can opt to use funds from the existing legal services account for this purpose, and upon completion of the court case, return these allocated funds to free cash.
Okay. Do more comments. Next.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
Okay. My understanding is-
You, you, hold on one second. You hit the, you hit the mute button on the microphone, so no one's going to be able to hear you.
Okay. So, my understanding is that looking for between twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars for legal fees-
It's twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand. My suggestion would be that the residents who it bothers get a GoFundMe account, like my husband and I did, to fight the tanks.
All opposed, please.
Why is the town spending an excessive amount of money on legal fees to continue to fight the racetrack? They've gone to court, they've lost, they've gone to court, they've lost, whatever the case may be. Yeah, it is a specialty group of people in this town who don't like the noise, who want to get rid of the racetrack, then they should collectively get together and they should hire an attorney on their own, like the group of people in my neighborhood did, to fight the tanks. If they can't do that, then they're S O L. But the whole thing of it is, is that the rest of the taxpayers in this town, who it's not bothering, because I hear them every time they're running, they shouldn't have to take out of their pocket to pay the legal fees for that specialty group who don't like it. So I suggest they all pony up and pay it themselves, like my husband and I and the neighborhood in my area did, because we shouldn't have to pay for their legal fees.
Mr. Moderator, I mean, Mr. Moderator, I'm in objective of this amendment for the following reasons. Twenty-five thousand dollars is just the entry fee. When we lose this, and we will, we're going to be on the hook for his attorney's fees and possibly his civil litigation damages. We have to overcome a district judge's ruling, and if anybody has read the transcripts of this case, they will see that we lost, we didn't just lose, we lost terribly. They're not in violation of our noise ordinance, we have no standing if we go to Superior Court, we just can't file an appeal because we lost, we have to have some substance to that appeal. And I'm sorry, but this, this just doesn't have it. And I'd also like to make a motion that the business owner, he's not a resident, if he wants to speak, then we allow him to say something, because he is a business owner in our town, so I'd like to have that motion on the floor.
Anybody object to the owner speaking when it comes time? Is anybody object to that? Okay. So he can speak if he wants to. Are you in favor or in opposition of the motion?
I'd like to see this struck.
Okay. Is there anybody in favor of the motion? Is there anybody in favor of the motion? I, I, I just wanna get an equal, I just wanna go back and forth a little bit here, that's all.
As a town person, I don't think I should pay for it. I think the people in that neighborhood should pay for it. That's my opinion, so my voice was delayed before me, so that's...
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with the woman who said the GoFundMe thing, or they pay for themselves. Why should...
You need to speak right into the microphone.
Why should we pay for something that doesn't bother us? I live right around the corner. I barely hear, I hear the train louder than I hear that. Are we gonna pay to cease and desist the train? It's ridiculous.
It's funny, because I can hear the train.
See you?
Can I get a microphone?
No, I just wanted to agree, he should speak. It don't bother anyone on a site. It's barely any noise. I think this is ridiculous.
All right.
Oh, yeah, Tim Rowan at 61 Quabog Street. Uh, I wanna make it very clear, I don't oppose the operation of the track in any way, shape, or form. What I am concerned with is apparently, uh, the, the disregard for various discussions and zoning bylaws and all the rest of it is what concerns me. It was very, actually, quiet weekend this past weekend, Memorial Day, because something happened. There were people there, but it was quieter for some reason. There's some, so there's, there's mitigation techniques the owner of the track can make, but in order to make sure that we have that conversation and make sure all the parties are serious about the conversation, we have to have a stick to make sure those conversations are productive, otherwise we'll continue to just talk and talk and talk and we won't get anywhere. I'm not thrilled with any more legal action. Legal actions take years to resolve. I would much more prefer some sort of, uh, settlement and discussion with interested parties to figure out other ways, like they managed to do at the 5-way track in Charleston. They had a big fuss with, when that went in, and somehow or other it got resolved to everyone's satisfaction to some degree. Not that everyone got what they wanted there, and not everyone's gonna get what they want here, but there is a path that we can have a discussion, but unfortunately, it strikes me that we seem to need the threat, I hate to use the term, of further litigation to make sure we have a true constructive discussion where people give and people take, so we have a, a settlement that, that is fair to all the neighbors in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Here in Lincoln, Quabog Street. Uh, there's a big sign on the entrance of the track there that says, "No Brookfield officials allowed," and like the gentleman just stated, you know, about finding an...
Get right into the microphone, Gary. People don't back...
Finding an equitable, equitable solution, well, that's not possible, because Mr. Porth does not wanna pay any attention to any rules.
I'm sorry, I, that, that is out of order. I don't, you know, you're, you're attacking his character and, and his motives, and I won't allow that.
So, uh, uh, the, the thing is, is, uh, like you said, there's noise, noise abatement you could do, or different things like that, we don't want anything to do with that. And so, uh, you're gonna make this noise, and we're gonna like it, and, and, and it's absolutely wrong. You know, there's a lot of people that have their life's investment in a home, and this guy has spoiled it with the noise.
So, first I wanna respond to the people who say, "It's not in my backyard, so it doesn't matter," because we are a community, and, you know, if there was a drug nest in one part of town, the people in the other part of town wouldn't say, "Well, it's not our problem. People should raise money in their neighborhood to solve it." Or if there was, um, I don't know, I can't think of another example in my two minutes, but, you know, we're all a community. We don't say, I don't, I don't say, "I don't have children, so I don't wanna pay for the kids' education." You know, we all have to do things together to get anywhere, especially in such a small community. However, I really heard the gentleman who said, "I don't think that the legal avenue is it, because, you know, we've already spent money in court, we don't have standing," and so I would like to offer an amendment that we use this money, and I don't know what committee I would refer this to, so you're gonna have to help me, but that we refer this to whatever committee in town is most likely to be able to help with either arbitration, mediation, litigation, bring in whoever you need to be able to negotiate, you know, with some power with this guy, because it really is hurting so many people in town. So, I don't know if that's enough of an amendment.
Um, well, you'd have to, you'd have to make a very specific motion to a committee. I mean, we, we have a planning board and the zoning, zoning board of appeals and lots of others that have been active with this for quite a while, so, uh, I'm not sure that's a, you'd have to be very specific about what you would wanna do with that. So, why don't you, if you wanna write something down, go right ahead and do that, you, you got another opportunity to come to the microphone and speak, otherwise, uh, let's continue.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Porter. I think this is probably a question for town council. According to the town report, the annual report, it talks about all these pending cases that there, there were at least in, uh, 2022, but there were Superior Court cases pending regarding appeals of the District Court. This particular citation, I tried to do some research on it, it took place some time ago. I don't know if the decision has been rendered on the citation that this particular petition is addressing. The District Court, has the District Court made a decision on it?
Through you, Ms. Moderator. My name is Jeff Blake, I am your town council, as you know, and I also am the one that has handled this, at least, at least the second case from its inception. You are correct that there was a District Court case, there was an appeal of a zoning board, uh, zoning enforcement officers, um, enforcement order, saying that Mr. Porth, the owner of the track, had exceeded the pre-existing non-conforming use that was protected. The first case was whether or not there was a pre-existing non-conforming use. The District Court found that there was. There's a second case in District Court as to whether or not he's exceeded the scope of the protection. That case has not concluded. In fact, that case is still in District Court. With respect to the request for appropriation for monies to appeal a District Court decision to the Superior Court, that can't be done under our, under our laws. It either go to an appeals court, or it will go to a, uh, appellate division of the District Court. But that can't happen until there's been a final judgment, and there has not been a final judgment in that case. You may have seen a Superior Court case. A Superior Court case was brought against the property owner and the track during COVID because there were violations of COVID. We, we did get a preliminary injunction in that case, and we were able to, to get safeguards in place to, to, to comply with the, with the COVID restrictions. But, like everything with COVID, it was, it was, it was an evolving situation, and by the time everything played itself out, the governor had already opened up those kind of facilities, so it was short-lived. So that's why you saw a case in the Superior Court.
Okay, but you, in, in the, um, annual report, it talks about, um, Superior Court case, cases related to the town's efforts to regulate motocross operations, and I'm just curious if these other ca, if this particular citation, 1869-CV00257, if that has been decided in the District Court...
It, it has not.
That one, but there's a later, there's a later case pending as well.
Okay. So, the, the first case has, like I said, has been decided, has been decided now for years, so there's no appeal of that.
1869, that's...
I, I don't, you know, unfortunately, I didn't bring that number, so I, I don't know, but there's a first case in District Court that determined whether or not it was pre-existing non-conforming use. The court said it was.
Okay.
That was an appeal. The second case is an expansion of the use, and that has not been fully decided. There have been a number of decisions in that case, because there's been a lot of motion practice, but at this point, a final judgment has not been issued.
Okay. So it's, it's premature then to talk about filing an appeal for something that hasn't been decided. Is that correct?
Is there a point of order?
Mine?
Oh, I'm, I'm getting there. Uh, I am. I just think that the information that is coming from, from our town council is important, uh, so I'm allowing this to go a little bit longer just because this is a complicated matter, and I think it's important for people to hear. So, I, I'm almost done. My patience is limited on this, so, um, I'll finish answering your question, and then that's what we've got.
Through you, Ms. Moderator. It, I, you can't appeal the District Court decision at this point, it's not a final judgment, and you can't appeal it to a Superior Court.
Okay, thank you.
Good point of order, by the way.
Hi, my name is, uh, Dan Porth, I'm the owner of the track, and I'd like to begin by saying, uh, it's been, it's been 10 years, 10 years, okay, that this has been going on. The day that I purchased the track, I had the zoning board come down and give me a cease and desist on the spot. It's been constant fighting from day one. I've tried to work with this town, the town does not wanna work with me, so the fact that these residents are saying that...
Okay, I want you to be a little careful about that, because, you know, you know, yes, but you're asking this person, excuse me, I am the moderator, and I will stop you immediately if you wanna contest me.
I'm not contesting you, I'm just telling you what's been going on.
So, I want you to be careful about accusing the town of not working with you. Okay, that's it.
Okay, fine, I'll, then, I have nothing else to say then, because you don't wanna listen to what I have to say about what's happened in the last 20 years of this process...
I just want you to be careful about accusing the town not to, not to work with you.
Okay, well, I'm gonna give you a little history then, okay? I bought the property in 2013, all right? All I've been doing is getting cease and desist orders from the town. I've been battling the town, non-stop, for 10 years, okay? The fact that they say I'm gonna open seven days a week, I'm open five days a week, five days a week, okay? Uh, the sign that's up there that says, "Town officials and, and are not allowed," is because I feel like I'm getting screwed on a constant basis. I'm getting, I feel like an ethics violation's gonna be coming on my, on my behalf to, to the town because of all the unethical things that this town has done to me, okay? I have won my cases, I've spent money, and the fact that the town residents are trying to put money together to appeal a decision that hasn't even been made yet, like the lawyer said, there's still litigation going on. So I'm here to defend myself and explain that I won my grandfathering case, okay? Under grandfathering, you can grow under grandfathering status, okay? I've not changed the usage or anything. So, all I'm saying is, I oppose the citizen's petition, and I'm here to defend myself. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Linda Lincoln, I live at 24 Quabog Street in Brookfield. Um, I've lived there for 42 years, and we have put up with the track for more than, more years than what Mr. Porth is saying, because there has been a previous owner. There is, we don't have any peace of mind down there, and we hear that, and he says it's open, it's five, it's open seven days a week, because we have kept track of it on a calendar, and I am sure that many other residents who live on Quabog and Pine Lane and Brunel have. And if he wants to be here in the town of Brookfield, you think maybe he could get a meeting with the neighbors and try to come to some happy medium to get along with us, and maybe we wouldn't be doing these, um, appeal cases all the time against him. But he doesn't wanna sit down with any of us and talk, he's just interested in the money that he's making up here, and he doesn't care anything about the town of Brookfield.
Hi.
Hello, how are you?
Hi, Dan Porth.
Okay.
I just wanna clarify something Dan said. The town has sat with him many times, or tried to sit with him many times.
Can you guys hear her in the back? Could you just get a little closer to the microphone?
Hi.
What you have to say is very important.
Okay. Marie Mariano, Brookfield. I wanna clarify with something Dan Porth said. We have sat with him many times, I'm on the zoning board, or tried to sit with him going forward. We're ready, we're willing, we're able to negotiate, mediate, sit down, have a beer, and I don't even like beer. Come on, Dan, come sit with us, and we'll talk it out, and we'll make it best for Brookfield. Thank you.
All right. Tim Rowan, uh, 61 Quabog again. Yeah, I just, and I, I respect, uh, uh, the owner's comments here. Unfortunately, I think there's either a typo on the webpage or something else is wrong, because the webpage clearly states, "The track is open noon to dusk, Monday through Friday, 10 to 6 on Saturdays, and 10 to 5 on Sundays," which, again, is, if there's a conversation to be had about operating hours, let's have it, but in terms of whether it's open five or seven days a week, that's just a conversation that has to happen. It appears on the website, unless it's a typo, that it's open seven days a week, and we do hear it seven days a week, as, as some of the neighbors have said. And again, we're just looking for some sort of management of the sound in some way, shape, or form. Low-noid mufflers, yes, they take power from the bikes, all the rest of it, but plenty of people have those types, because plenty of tracks require that already, to be tested beforehand and all the rest, so there's just ways that could be done if we wanna have a conversation this afternoon. Okay.
I was on the, uh, court session on May 5th of this year, when the attorney for the plaintiff stated that his client told him the track was operating five days a week. That same day, you can look at the website of Memex 23 and see it had hours listed Monday through Sunday. So, um, that's just a piece of information. Also, the judgment by Judge Ginsburg in 2017 clearly stated that you cannot expand non-conforming use, and there has been great expansion of this non-conforming use. Uh, just ask any of the residents, how many more cars are going, how big the track has gotten, and this is not supposed to be allowed when it's a non-conforming use, a grandfathered non-conforming use. Additionally, Massachusetts state law said these types of zoning infractions should be adjudicated in Superior Court. That's all I have to say.
Chris Graham, 32 Pine, uh, I have a question for zoning, uh, zoning board. Is there a noise ordinance in that part of town?
Do we have somebody that can answer that? There isn't?
We don't have it.
No, no ordinance, thank you. There is no ordinance.
Ms. Moderator, in light of what town council said, it sounds like we have no merit here, so I'd like to make a motion, do we postpone this indefinitely?
I second.
Okay, a motion's been made to postpone indefinitely, that is, we're gonna kill it. Uh, so, is there a second?
I second.
There's a second. Uh, okay. So is there any debate on the motion to postpone indefinitely? All those in favor of postponing this indefinitely, which will kill it, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Uh, the ayes have it, uh, it's postponed indefinitely. Uh, there's, there's no further business before ceasing. Uh, I'm gonna call this motion, uh, this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.